Waiting on anybody?
Recording in progress.
Okay, recording's back on. We'll take roll call. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Melango?
Yes.
Mr. Popoli?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Alasko?
Yes.
Mr. Zozovich?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We're up to our second and final application for tonight for New York SMSA Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless, 715 Ocean Avenue.
It looks like their attorney was here, but now he's not, so I might want to give him a second to reconnect.
Actually, I'm pretty reconnected.
Oh, well, there you are. Yep, you're good.
Hi, Rich. This is Kevin Kennedy. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, can we just do a couple of administrative and procedural things before we turn it over to Mr. Delugree?
Certainly, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, so April, this is a continuation. I think we've had two meetings thus far. And just for the record, is everyone here eligible to vote tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for the record, Mr. Gray, did you listen to the tape?
I did listen to the tape. Well, it was pretty, it was pretty good, but not 100%. And I would gladly give up my vote if you want to someone who has experienced live all the meetings.
Okay, we can determine that in a little bit. Thank you. And for the record, we'll just mark your certification that April had you sign, that you listened to the tape as to B1. And again, as I said last time, thank you. It is very important. And it is at times like this that you realize that it is important to speak into the mic and all those type of things because, so that's a good point and a good reminder. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, yes?
For the record, I listened to the April 22nd. I think that meeting was, there was connection issues, so nothing was really discussed. But I did listen to that as well and sign a statement, so.
Perfect. So I'm going to mark Mr. Ross's certification as B2. Just put it again, so thank you for that. And Mr. Chairman, we have here Christine Bell. Christine is our Borough Planner, Borough Planner. And we usually don't have her here, but there was a technical information and a planning need. So she was invited. We're awfully glad to have her. And Mr. Chairman, because she does not regularly appear, I would think I would, if you're, you know, probably swear in. And then just for the benefit of members of the public and the benefit of the board and for Mr. Delugree's team, have her recite her certifications and I can swear her in. We may as well get that done now if you're okay with that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
All right, is Christine Bell present? I saw her earlier.
I'm here.
Okay, very good. So Christine, why don't you just state your name and business address, please?
Sure, my name is Christine Bell. My business address is 788 Wayside Road in Neptune. I'm a licensed-
I'll swear you in first and then you can recite your certifications. Ms. Bell, good evening. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it, will be the truth of best knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a?
A planner.
Licensed planner, okay. And why don't you give, if you give some information and we can see if any board members or Mr. Delugree have any questions about your credentials and licensing?
Sure, so I have my master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've acted as the Borough Planner in Belmar for the last two or three, three years. 2020 is a blur. And I have, you know, actually come to the zoning board as the floodplain administrator before, a role I also hold in Belmar. I'm zoning board, planning board planner in a number of municipalities, including Bradley Beach, Titten Falls, Howell.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, do you or any members of the board have any questions or comments about her certifications and licenses?
No, we'll accept those credentials.
Okay, and just for the record, Mr. Delugree, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And April, no new plans or anything has been submitted that I have to mark into the record, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Rich, I guess we just turn it over to you and let you proceed?
Well, thank you very much. For the record, Rick Delugree, Cooper Levinson in Atlantic City, representing the applicant. Let me start by saying it's nice to see everyone for the first time. I'm a long time listener, first time Zoom. And I want to give credit where it's due to the borough's IT person, John Sabia, I think is his last name, who made this possible. With that, if the board would indulge me in just a moment to recap where we've been. And I know by my count, we have, counting Mr. Gray, eight eligible voters tonight, which is great. And I want to thank the board members, first, for being there. And secondly, for those who had to listen to the tape in order to be eligible. Thank you for going that extra distance. The first testimony that we presented was back in November of last year. Then we had a gap of a few months and we presented additional testimony in March of this year. And last month, as noted, because of technical delays, couldn't go forward. But we fully expect that we'll be able to finish tonight. We presented testimony from a number of witnesses, but principally from three expert witnesses. We have Mike Webster, who is with VCOM Radio Frequency Engineers. Mike is here again tonight and we plan to have some limited testimony from him. We have Tim Kronk, who's the professional planner with TK Design Associates. And I plan to have, again, limited testimony for Mr. Kronk. Previously, we, the board heard testimony as well from our site engineer, Colleen Connolly of Share Design, who is here on the Zoom tonight, although we don't plan any additional testimony from her. She'll be available certainly for any questions that the board may have. In the course of those two hearings, we've marked into evidence 11 different exhibits. And at the March hearing, there were, I would say, probably two main areas of concern. One main area of concern focused on, or was the focus of, members of the public who spoke. And that I would characterize generally as health concerns. We have addressed those in our testimony previously. We're going to address those again tonight through Mr. Webster's testimony. The other main area of interest for the board members principally concerned the issue of co-location. And specifically, the concern that at this particular site, were the board to approve this application, that that might lead to or facilitate a proliferation of other antennas and equipment on the same building. We presented testimony before from Ms. Connolly, and she analyzed in quite a bit of detail the design of the building, which is a unique building, I'm sure all board members are familiar with it. And the relevant part of that unique design is the very steeply sloped roof and the fact that it has one elevated area to the front along Ocean Avenue, which is the site that we propose to occupy in its entirety, which pretty much, well, we're not pretty much. We say 100% would preclude anyone else from locating additional equipment on the site using the co-location statutes that we were talking about. The board had also asked whether the owner of the property, Mr. Brian Peters, would be present on this Zoom. I had the chance to speak to him and I looked in the, I looked in the list of attendees and I see his name. So I believe he was in attendance and I thank him for doing that. And one of the conversations that I had, which, you know, we'll flesh out on the record if the board wants to look in this direction. One of the conversations I had with Mr. Kennedy since the last hearing was the idea that the property owner might be willing to voluntarily limit the property from any future co-location. Even though, as I say, we believe that it would not be a practical possibility, you know, we've discussed with the owner whether or not he would be willing to voluntarily waive whatever rights he may have to seek co-location or, you know, to rent space to others who may seek to co-locate equipment. My understanding is, and I will not speak for him on this, but my understanding is that he is willing to volunteer that, which I think may go a long way to address what the board had identified as a principal concern. Beyond that, as I noted, we have testimony planned just from two witnesses, the first of which would be Mike Webster, who was previously sworn, but certainly can be sworn again if the board would like. And then Mr. Kronk. That concludes my opening remarks.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, should we bring up Michael Webster?
Yeah, definitely.
All right, and even though we probably don't have to, just because we're going to have Christine. Mike, why don't you just swear you in again? You could just state your name and business address, please.
Yes, Michael Webster, 2147 Route 27, Suite 102, Edison, New Jersey.
And you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
An RF engineer.
All right, and just for the record, you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth of best knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Webster, good evening. Let me start by asking you, since it's been a little while since we've been before the board. Looking back at the testimony presented at the two prior hearings, is there any part of that testimony that you want to change at this point?
At this time, no.
All right, thank you. Let's start with the basics. We've talked about the need in terms of Verizon Wireless's service need for this site at the, what we call Mamalukes building. Does Verizon Wireless need this site in order to provide adequate level of service?
Yes, they do.
Right, could you describe briefly what the service need is that would be addressed through this site?
Yes, the site at 10th Avenue and Ocean Avenue, which Verizon calls Belmar 2, has reached capacity on the frequencies that are currently deployed there. The site at Mamalukes will offload some capacity traffic from that site, allowing additional subscribers to access the system.
All right, now, in terms of-
I'm sorry, Rich, this is Kevin. Mike, I'm taking notes. What'd you say, the site at Mamalukes will offload some capacity?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, there's been discussion at the previous meetings, or at least one of the previous meetings, about a concurrent application that is being made for the possible introduction of a distributed antenna system, or a DAS, along the boardwalk front of Jim Belmar. Are you familiar with that prior testimony?
I am.
Yes. And I'm not going to ask you to give details about the system, but is that DAS system operational today?
It is not operational.
To your knowledge. Has that been approved yet by Belmar?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Let's assume for the moment that the site, that the DAS system was to be approved by Belmar. Would we still need the site at Mamalukes?
Yes, we would.
Let me ask you to touch on a little bit of the history of other sites in this area. And specifically, you may remember there was some discussion at prior sessions about some potential sites that had been looked at down in the Spring Lake area. Do you recall that testimony?
Yes, I do.
All right, in general, were the sites in Spring Lake ultimately available to Verizon Wireless?
No, they were not.
Let's assume, though, that the sites that had been discussed down in Spring Lake had become available at some point to Verizon Wireless. Would we still need the Mamalukes site?
Yes.
And why is it?
To offload capacity traffic from Belmar 2. It's that far to the south would not have covered Ocean Avenue up near Belmar 2. So anything down there would still require a two-site solution.
Okay, so you said a two-site solution?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Let's jump over now to the issue of health and the concerns that you heard expressed, as we all did, by members of the public who spoke at the last session. You have prepared, and we've submitted to the board as part of this application, an analysis of radio frequency emissions. Is that right?
That is correct.
And although you may not recall, that was marked as exhibit A8 back in November. You're familiar, though, with the contents of that report, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
And in general, does that report analyze the projected and expected emissions from the Mamalukes site in terms of whether or not those emissions would comply with the stated FCC emission standards?
Yes, it does.
And what were your conclusions in that report regarding compliance?
Our conclusions were that the site remains within FCC limits for general exposure with a rating of 3.6% of that limit.
Okay, and 100% would be the maximum allowed limit, so you're at 3.6%?
Correct.
All right, and that's measured as applies to the general public rather than to persons who may be familiar with or skilled in working around these kind of facilities?
That is correct.
They call that the, is that called the unregulated exposure?
This is uncontrolled exposure.
Uncontrolled, thank you.
That's what that one's called.
Now, one of the persons who spoke from the public, as I recall, raised the question of whether the fact that 5G technology is one of the technologies that would be available at the Mamalukes site, whether that negated the findings about compliance with the FCC standards?
As the standard is written, no, it does not. To evaluate emission limits as the standard is currently written, the only thing that's taken into account is the frequency in use and the power being emitted from the antenna. The technology is not a factor in the emission standard.
Okay, now, so it's clear. Are you saying that the technology that may be used at a given site, be it 3G, 4G, or 5G, has no bearing on the compliance of that site with FCC emission standards?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Webster right now.
Thank you. Typically, we hold all our questions to the end, but we do have Christine Bell here. And I was going to ask if she had any questions now, or would she like to hold her questions till the end?
Sure, I think it makes sense for me to ask some of my questions now just to gain a better understanding of the project from a planning perspective. So I read through the RF analysis and report dated July 1st, 2020. And I certainly am not an RF engineer, but trying to understand this from a planning perspective, you speak about how you plan out the cell locations as a grid. And you do provide two figures that show the volume data for both that 10th Avenue location and then the location on West Maplewood Road. And I was just wondering, you had stated that the volume, you know, you had reached the volume limits at the 10th Avenue location. Because it's a grid, do any of the other sites, like the West Maplewood Road site, take on some of that capacity, or is it just all located from the one site?
In the instance of this proposed site, we would only be offloading traffic from Belmar 2 on 10th Avenue.
So, but right now, I'm asking, right now, so if someone was at Mamalukes now and the 10th Avenue tower was overloaded, would they get capacity from the Maplewood Road or another site, something like that?
No, they would not.
They would not, so it would just? Okay.
Christine, did I interrupt? What does that mean, that they wouldn't get service from another area? Does that mean they don't have cell service?
They would have cell service, meaning they would still show bars on their phone. But when a site reaches capacity, the site cannot schedule the users to actually use the signal that they're seeing there.
Would somebody be able to make an emergency call in that situation?
Emergency calls would preempt, yes.
So they would have emergency services?
In most cases, yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Christine.
That's okay. And then I was just wondering, just kind of, you know, to help me understand this better. Map 3 shows, so this proposed new site would really only serve a one-block radius, well, serve along the ocean, north to about 15th Avenue and south to about the border with Spring Lake? So it's a pretty small boost in service area?
Correct, it's being targeted to offload traffic along Ocean Avenue and along the beach.
Okay, yeah, because your map does show that really it seems like the only time you're exceeding those volume capacities are during the summer months, right? Okay, that's my only question right now. I might have more later.
Thanks. Mike, can I just see, expand on that? When you say Belmar 2 has reached capacity, can you describe what capacity means and how that's measured? Because I mean, I can't imagine, it's more than a couple of weekends when everybody's down. Or is it through the whole year, or how is that, what's the definition of capacity?
Capacity is measured in what they call forward data volume, which in LTE or 4G technology is measured in megabits per second. And based upon a site's radius and the number of people on the site, the total capacity will vary a little. We do have estimated numbers in the report. I don't have it right here in front of me. I can find it. But every site, they have a threshold number that if they reach that number, they start to look to offload traffic to other sites by getting capacity sites built off of that sector.
And then this one, Belmar 2 doesn't have other capacity sites?
No, Belmar 2 covered south from 10th Ave down to the border of Belmar and into Spring Lake, as it was built when this report was originally written.
Okay, and then when it's reached capacity, if there's still emergency services, what takes up that capacity?
There's still people that are on the network. So as people are using it, voice calls will get choppy, data sessions will get slower. So people will still be able to access the system, but it'll be intermittent. You know, you might have it one second, you might not have it the next. You know, it becomes a bottleneck.
Do you have, just one more question. The maps show sites further west in Belmar, but are there any other sites, you know, north in Avon or south in Spring Lake, closer to the ocean, like the Belmar 2 site?
The map that we had that showed neighboring sites was map 1 in that report. And in the area that we studied, no, Belmar 2 was the closest to the ocean.
Christine, did you have anything further?
I live near the train station. It's going by right now, so I'm sorry, but no, not-
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Delugree, back to you.
Mr. Chairman, the fact that you opened up for questions, the timeliness of the questions might be relevant. Maybe it might make more sense if we could ask the questions if Mr. Webster has done testifying?
We can, certainly. I wasn't going to open it up to all the board questions, so maybe we do this. If you have questions specifically for Mike Webster, why don't we go through and we'll just go through and ask each board member if they have questions for him?
Thank you. I think that would be timely because of the question and answers that were just provided from Mr. Delugree to Mr. Webster.
Sure, have at it, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay. There was a question asked, and I'm not sure if I was clear about the answer. It was talking about, Mr. Webster, you made a statement that said the distributed antenna system would, if the distributed antenna system moves forward, you would still need this tower at Mamalukes, but you didn't state why that's the case?
Because the DAS and Mamalukes are designed in a way where the coverage would interleave on itself so that they both, both systems would provide capacity relief to Belmar 2.
Right, but the DAS system would offload capacity, correct?
Correct.
Standalone? It's not dependent. It would be a repeater system that would tie back to 10th Avenue?
No, they would be independent sites. They would all be considered small cell nodes. And each of them would offload capacity in that area. None of them would actually be tied back to that.
But the capacity issue would be alleviated by the fact that these exist?
Yes.
That's important. So that yes that we just captured there, you're acknowledging that if these antennas go up on the east side of Ocean Avenue, we have reduced, we offload or we have, the capacity issue is alleviated?
Well, it helps to alleviate it.
Correct, okay.
You can't define that.
It's important, it's important fact, because there does seem to be some help in sight when and if the DAS system gets installed, that could have an impact on whether or not this is necessary for the Mamalukes location. Okay, all right, then the next question is, if the town were willing to, in advance of the longer-term distributed antenna system that you described, allow a tower to be put up on an interim basis until a DAS system comes in, or instead of the Mamalukes application, allow one of those DAS antennas to function in the capacity that you described, wouldn't that also obviate the need for this antenna at Mamalukes?
The DAS system has applied for, was built with Mamalukes in mind. So if Mamalukes was not approved and installed, there would be no capacity offload in the area around Mamalukes and ATM.
Mr. Webster, maybe I didn't ask the question the right way. If across the street from Mamalukes, the town allowed an antenna to go up that would serve the same purpose that you're describing, would that obviate the need to put a tower at Mamalukes? Directly across the street, or maybe a street further north or a street further south?
Mamalukes, as designed, provides more capacity offload than those small cells would.
I'm not talking about the small cell. I'm saying you would build across the street what you're proposing to build at Mamalukes?
I know what I'm saying is what we're proposing to build at Mamalukes cannot fit in one of those street furniture light posts that are proposed in the DAS system.
Those light posts have not been engineered yet.
I've seen the construction drawings that had some proposed dimensions on them, which I thought were part of the application for them.
That's, there's some consideration to build more generic posts that potentially could accommodate beyond Verizon's needs?
I don't have any, I don't have any knowledge on that.
Okay, but I just want to make sure that we're clear about this because there are options that are available, if you're willing to work with the town, to try to accommodate reasonable requests that the town might be willing to install an antenna on the east side of Main Street and handle this issue that you have and obviate the need to move forward on the private property request that you have.
Without knowing exactly what we would be able to install, I can't opine on whether or not I'd be able to approve that.
Okay, and then my last question is, the capacity data that was cited, was that based on the summer of 2020 capacity where the problems showed themselves?
Our report that we issued in July of- Our report that we issued in uh July of twenty twenty um had data from summer of twenty nineteen and the report that we issued in uh that we revised in January of this year uh had data from last summer in twenty twenty.
Was the data worse or better in twenty twenty?
It was very similar in twenty twenty as it was in the year prior.
I find that very difficult to understand because our uh beach capacity in twenty twenty was significantly higher than twenty nineteen and why your data would show it as very similar, it just doesn't, it just begs credibility a little bit because we we've had about a year in terms of tenants, even in spite of COVID. So I I I would think that your capacity issue would travel equally with our beach attendance that we see during, that we saw summer over summer.
Um, as the site reaches capacity, subscribers can't get on anymore. So if there's extra traffic there, there's the system doesn't capture that.
Okay, I don't have any further question for you, Mr. Webster. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your accommodation.
Yeah, certainly. Thanks, Mr. Fitzgerald. Uh, Mike, can I ask you one more question? I I think I heard you say if they put up the DAS system, it would relieve some capacity in the area, but you weren't able to calculate how much capacity that would relieve for Bellmar two. Is it, is that what you said?
Uh, yes, um, it's actually very similar to what I uh was just commenting on that. Um, when when Bellmar two is at capacity, there is an unknown amount of traffic that is not able to be served. So by adding a site to the system, I cannot tell you how much traffic will actually be on that site um until it's live and we actually see what it's doing. Uh, because we don't know how know how much it's actually.
So we could be talking about a very few number of people with with choppy or intermittent data service? You just don't know how many people there are and that's what the antennas for?
Based on the the data that we see and how long that it reaches capacity, we don't believe that it is a small number of people. We we believe that the site is needed to relieve capacity along Ocean Avenue.
Uh, I might be missing it and 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 you you don't know what that DAS system would provide because you can't calculate how many people aren't getting service through Bellmar two. But you know that you need the antenna because you believe it's a large number of people that need service, but the but the DAS system can't provide that service for them?
Uh, the DAS service, the DAS system is targeted in different areas. So the the um, is it okay if I bring up a map that was in one of our?
Oh, yeah, please, please. I answer for April. I'm assuming um Mike can share his screen.
Hey, Mr. Lisco, if you could just repeat that last sentence. You said you can't calculate how many people aren't getting service for Bellmar number two, but.
Yeah, my my it's it's a it's a pretty tricky question. I'm not able to articulate it.
No, I very well articulate. I just didn't write it down.
Yeah, my question is if if Verizon can't tell us how many people aren't getting aren't getting service after Bellmar two is at capacity and they can't tell us how many people aren't getting service relief through the DAS system, how do they know they need an additional antenna beyond what the DAS system might be able to provide?
Thank you. All right, um, so I brought up uh map two, which is on page ten of the report that we submitted January fourteen, twenty twenty one.
Hey, Rich, excuse me, uh, uh, Mr. Webster. Rich, we've already marked this report, correct?
Uh, yes, this was exhibit uh A eleven.
Okay, sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Um, this map shows um Bellmar two um at the intersection of Tenth Ave and Ocean Avenue. Um, and it also shows all of the proposed ODS locations along um Ocean Avenue and our proposed site at Eighteenth Avenue that we've referred to as Mama Loox. Um, all the sites that are in blue would be providing uh capacity 4G coverage, um, which would offload from Bellmar two. In the case of the sector that we would be offloading from, there would only be two DAS nodes in the proposed system that would offload capacity data uh from that site. So that's why Mama Loox would also be required. Uh, the next page, map three, uh, shows the addition of the coverage that we would propose with Mama Loox, um, showing that it's providing capacity offload for the couple of blocks north, two blocks north and two blocks south of Eighteenth Avenue.
I have a question. I'm sorry, um, but the uh map you provided in the July twenty twenty report that doesn't have those nodes shows a larger coverage area for the
Correct.
The Mama Loox site, um, would you put different equipment in if you had all these other sites or why is the coverage area different?
Uh, no, this is this is the same equipment. Um, this is what we call a best server map. And so what this is showing is a site that has the strongest signal at a particular area. So when we add the ODS nodes to that previous map, it it doesn't actually change where the signal is. It's just saying the ODS map is the strong, the ODS coverage down here in the south or up here in the north is the stronger system and that is what's going to capture the customers.
Would would you be able to put more of those DAS antennas in front of the Mama Loox location to to gain additional capacity? Why is there only two there?
Um, with with the knowledge that I had of how the street furniture was going to be configured to allow equipment to be installed in them, uh, the plan was to only do one sector of 4G uh in each of the blue ODS node. So the one at uh Twentieth and the one at Fourteenth Avenue. Um, if we did a node at Eighteenth Avenue, um, it would be proposed to be the same thing where you would only get a single sector. Uh, the equipment that we're proposing at Mama Loox would provide two sectors of uh traffic, therefore offloading twice as much capacity from Bellmar two.
But you don't even know if you need that capacity yet. One one node might give you the capacity that you need.
Yeah, there there's no way for us to to quantify that number in advance of how much traffic will be offloaded.
That I understand. Thank you.
You've said that the maps um show the best coverage, but just because that's the best coverage doesn't mean there's not coverage from other locations there, correct? Because you don't like walk a block and have no service and then walk another block and get service back, right?
Correct, um, but the the way the devices work is the the signal, they they all work on the same uh frequency. So uh Mama Loox and Bellmar uh twenty for the ODS node would work on the same frequencies. So even though I would see the frequency from Mama Loox, because the Bellmar twenty signal is stronger, um, I would not be able to use the signal from Mama Loox. It it's based on a statistic that they calculate called uh signal to noise ratio. So if I looked at it from uh Mama Loox perspective, if I was down at Twentieth Avenue, I would have a negative signal to noise ratio, which means I'm seeing more noise than I am signal that I want to use. Because in that case, Bellmar would be considered a a noise source or an interferer.
Okay.
All right, uh, is there any other board member have questions for Mike?
I just got one real quick, um, if if possible.
Certainly, Mr. Ross.
I heard testimony that uh there was no um antennas along the beach further south uh than this location, um, I guess through Spring Lake uh that you mentioned. So I guess my question is, the folks down there must be in dire straits to get a to get a cell service, right? I mean, they've got they've got nothing, you said. So I guess I'm trying to understand, like, if I went down to Spring Lake on a busy day and I'm a Verizon customer, I mean, I'm out of luck, right?
Uh, in in the area that I studied, I I can't speak to there there are no other sites on Ocean Avenue in the area that we covered.
And how many does Bel- and how many does Bellmar have?
On Ocean Avenue? Bellmar only has the one site on Ocean Avenue.
Yeah, the one on uh the site two, right? So we've got two. Okay, I'm I'm just trying to understand like why all this stuff gets dumped in Bellmar when you've got this huge area down there that you said has nothing? So I was just curious what the logic is there um for coverage.
Yeah, and I think similarly to the north, um, you indicated you're not aware of any um locations in Avon either?
Uh, not not that I looked at for for this report, no.
But that's just, I I'm just trying to understand, like, you you need all this stuff in Bellmar in order for it to work, but you don't need it in Spring Lake or Avon right now. Is it just too late now?
I'm not, I'm not able to say whether they do or do not need it in Spring Lake or in Avon. I I I have not studied those areas in preparation of this report.
So I know, um, no, this is a D one use variance, but um as one of the conditional use requirements in the Bellmar ordinance, it requires an inventory of all existing sites uh within one mile of the border of Bellmar. Did you perform that type of inventory?
Uh, the the inventory that we performed was table one in the report that we submitted in January.
Uh, Mr. Webster, if I may ask you a question, and my colleague uh also, Mr. Ross, also asked the same question, and I wrote it down as a note. As you go north, Bradley Beach, Avon, Asbury Park, uh, why no one?
I I didn't say that there was or was not anything there. I said I did not study those areas as part of this report. I I can't tell you, and outside of the confines of the site inventory that we did for this report, I can't tell you exactly where the sites are.
And the other question I have on your map there, where you indicated you had different colors in some of the dots. Some of the dots were black, some of them were green. Are the black dots any different, different equipment?
Yeah, let me let me pull that back up for you and I will step through that. So on on this map, um, we showed nodes in green and we showed nodes in blue. Um, the nodes in green were being proposed as five G DAS nodes only. Um, and we're only going to cover
Five G.
Uh, they're five gigahertz and they're twenty eight gigahertz license bands. The blue nodes located at s- uh Seventh Avenue, uh Fourteenth Avenue, Twentieth Avenue, and I believe there's also the one that's on top of the map here at Third Avenue. Um, we're also going to have uh equipment to offload 4G, so seven hundred megahertz, eight fifty megahertz, nineteen hundred megahertz and twenty one hundred megahertz.
No, I know I know myself and the board members, we're all very concerned and and we we the question comes up and it'll probably come up ten more times. I just don't understand why Bellmar, when there's so many other towns, that you could have tried to do this. If you believe Bellmar is the only town that we've tried, you've tried it.
No, I I know I know that they have done systems along the beaches in other towns. Uh, I I cannot particularly comment on what towns they are or not because I I have not researched that, but I know that they have been targeting each communities.
So um table one and map one in your report lists sites in or near Bellmar, but it doesn't give a geographic area and map one doesn't even show um really anything north of Bellmar. It's just sites in Bellmar and a little bit to the west of Bellmar. So you don't know if you looked at anything greater than what you have in this report? You didn't look at the area outside of Bellmar more than what's listed?
Uh, it looks like, Mike, did you freeze up? Let's give Mike a minute. I think um I think his computer just first up.
Ms. Bell, for clarity, could you please restate that one mile requirement? I think that's important for the record that that you you seem to know that there was some requirement that was supposed to be met that you believe hasn't been.
Well, so, um, Bellmar's conditional use requirements, which this is, you know, he's not applying for a uh conditional use variance because it's not permitted in this zone district. Um, because we have specific areas within the borough that uh wireless telecommunications tower and antennas are permitted, um, but I think it's important to, you know, see what our requirements are for allowing um these types of things in places where they would be conditionally permitted in the borough. So it's section forty dash six dot twelve D um of the Borough's Development Regulations. Um, and then number three says inventory of uh existing sites. Um, each applicant for an antenna and or tower shall provide to the borough as part of the application an inventory and technical data, i.e. coverage area of all existing towers, antennas or sites approved for towers or antennas that are either within the jurisdiction of the Borough of Bellmar or within one mile of the border thereof, including specific information about location, height and design of each tower. The borough may share such information with other applicants applying for approvals under this subsection or other organizations seeking to locate antennas within the jurisdiction of the Borough of Bellmar, provided however the borough is not in any way representing or warranting that such sites are available or suitable.
That that sounds very clear. Thank you.
All right, did Mr. Webster get back on, April?
No, not yet.
All right. Rich, had you had any contact with Mike?
I have not, not since he went silent.
He's back.
What did you say, April?
He's back.
Okay, good. All right, Mr. Webster, you back?
Yes, I'm back. I apologize. My
No problem.
I dropped out.
Must be at capacity.
Another stop.
That's that's a Comcast problem.
So, um, I think uh uh Ms. Bell had asked you a question and you needed to repeat it or you know what it was?
Um, please repeat the question.
Sure, fair fair request.
Right, so your uh table one and map one in your report uh show existing and proposed sites in and around Bellmar, but I'm wondering if you looked at all sites within a one-mile radius of the borough or if you just looked at, you know, the sites closest to the borough within it or, you know, a block or two away?
That I cannot be I cannot be sure it covers a one-mile boundary around the township of Bellmar, but that's something that we could verify and I could have uh Rick submit a revised table if needed.
Mr. Chairman, have a question?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Malaga. Oh, just before we go to you, Mr. Malaga, uh, Mike, I think that probably would be valuable information to have for this application. Go ahead, Mr. Malaga.
Okay, so Mike, you're saying that the Bellmar two location is, uh, if I'm saying this correctly, overloaded at this time, correct?
Uh, correct.
All right, so how many antennas are at the Bellmar two location?
Um, I do not exactly know how many they have at Bellmar two. I do know that uh they have I do know that they have deployed the four frequency bands that typically deploy 4G, and they've also deployed actually, I'd have to verify that. I believe they deployed 28 gigahertz for 5G, but I'd have to go back and check notes to, to validate that. How many antennas they do that over, I, I do not know. But the, the quantity of antennas installed is is not a factor as to the signals that are propagated from the antennas.
But can any of those antennas be upgraded for something larger put at application to rectify the situation that we're discussing?
No, because the amount of frequency available to them is a finite resource, so the only way to get more capacity out of that frequency is to reuse it over shorter distances.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Mr. Gray, did you have any questions?
Yeah, yeah, for Mike, some of these questions are generated from the first meeting that I just listened to on my phone, and some of the visuals weren't quite what I needed to see. And I have some real basics off here. RF emissions, that submissions from the antenna are not good for humans, right?
If they exceed certain levels, they can be harmful.
Okay, when they, when they become distant from the antenna, do they become less and less, so that 3.6% at the antenna at this site that we're talking about, if it got further towards Tenth Avenue, does it diminish that 3.6 to another number?
As you get further away from an antenna, yes, that energy is spread out over more of an area, so therefore the emission would be rated lower. Just to correct what you had noted there, it is not 3.6% directly in front of the antenna. It is 3.6% at a estimated location on the building next door, where a person would reasonably be standing on the second story.
I understand. So if these areas then overlap each other, do you then have to add these numbers together? Like a proper reading?
In the case of how quickly the emissions drop off, a usable signal level for a device can be relatively low. So the, the emissions for one site typically do not carry all the way over to another site where you would have a meaningful change in the emissions percentage reported.
So there's no point at which the 3.6 that was measured somewheres, when it overlaps from the Belmar two antenna, becomes a greater number? It never becomes a greater number?
At, at that distance, Belmar two would not provide any meaningful change in that number.
Okay, you made reference to something called alpha sector, which I lost on that. It's something about from Tenth Avenue to Long Ocean. Is that south direction, and what is alpha sector?
Now, the, they typically reference a Greek letter for the sector names. Alpha is typically a sector that would point northern, in the northern direction. And then you go clockwise around the site. So in the case of what I was discussing, the alpha sector, that would be north along Ocean Avenue, and Mammalukes would offload capacity from the beta sector, which is facing south of Tenth Avenue.
Okay, and also at one point, and it wasn't, I don't think at the first meeting, it was a subsequent meeting, somebody had said that this antenna from Mammalukes only goes southeast and north, and in the next testimony, somebody said it was omnidirectional, which to me means it goes completely around it, which is true?
No, the antenna is not omnidirectional.
Okay, so error there.
It is a, it is a canister, it is a canister antenna. That antenna is capable of three sectors of input, but in the case of what is being deployed here, they are only using two of those three sectors. And those two sectors are going to be oriented northeast and southeast, only towards Ocean Avenue and the beach. So the sector that would face west out of that antenna is not.
It does not emit anything to the west?
No, it does not.
Okay, I think that's all I have for you right now.
I have one more question, actually. The coverage maps you said show, you know, so the map two, for instance, shows the areas of coverage, Belmar two, the Belmar two site is currently the best provider for. You said there is an unknown amount of traffic over the volume capacity now. How do you know that this location, since it is only a small kind of booster area, how do you know that this location is where the demand is? How do you know it's not, you know, further north in the Belmar two area, or further south, or further west?
It's well, they know from traffic studies that they've done and reports they get to their customer service lines, generally where their high usage areas are. And when they're, they're doing their site selection, they, they take that into consideration. In this particular case, it was also being built in conjunction with the ODS, so the nodes selected for the ODS and where Mammalukes was being targeted, were all chosen together so that each would serve relatively the same amount of geographical area, roughly two blocks of Belmar, when all was deployed. So each was providing capacity relief along the
Can I follow up on that? I apologize if you've given your answer, I just didn't understand. In the, in your report, wasn't the traffic study done just for, for Belmar, for Belmar two, the traffic study's done for the alpha sector, which would be north?
It is Belmar two alpha. On this one, alpha sector on this one actually faces to the south. And that, that is, that is my bad in characterizing it that way. So I, I stay corrected on that. The, the alpha sector on this site faces south.
Okay, I'm gonna make a note that this is starting to sound like Greek to me, and I, I think, I think at some point I'm gonna need an expert to look at this on behalf of Belmar. But why don't, why don't we keep rolling here? Were there any other board members that had quest? Oh, who's that? Hutch, go ahead.
Could you give me an idea of the RF power output and watts that it's that's proposed for this transmitter, Mammalukes?
Our emissions report has a list of all of the expected output powers from each antenna. So tables one A, one B, one C, one D, and one E summarize all of the, and those are pages one through three of our RF emissions report, were dated November ninth, twenty twenty. So for nineteen hundred megahertz, they are proposing four hundred and twenty-four watts. In twenty-one hundred megahertz, it's four hundred and forty-four watts. In three point five gigahertz, it is sixty-one watts. In five gigahertz, it is two point four watts. And at twenty-eight gigahertz, it is six hundred and nine point five watts.
We're, we're basically talking about, you know, around fifteen hundred watts output, which is, you know, a substantial I mean, I have a transmitter here that'll put out a hundred watts, and it's something you need to be fairly careful of, because you can get RF burns from it and stuff like that. You know, all the FCC regulations for amateur radio say you have to be very careful with the distance that you, you know, are from HF and VHF transmissions and things like that. And UHF transmissions, which you are using here, is, actually, gigahertz transmissions are even more problematic for damage to human tissue and things like that. So when you just tell me that, you know, there's so much of percent at so, you know, at so much distance, that doesn't really give me a, a really good feeling, because you were talking about putting in transmitters along the, along the oceanfront, too, practically in front of this. So you're talking about, you know, what Mr. Gray said before about, yeah, you might not get a, an overload from the Belmar two, but you could get it from, you know, all the, all the ones along the oceanfront and along the boardwalk that, that, that deal with that. I just, you know, I guess I'm not, I'm not that comfortable with, with this being so low. You know, transmitter towers, you know, transmitter locations that are on top, top of towers, yeah, well, power, power decreases to the square of the distance. But when you're, when you're talking about something so close to the ground, even a lot closer than the Tenth Avenue location, it just makes me uncomfortable. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hutchinson. Anybody else from the board have questions for Mike? Go ahead, Mr. Zennett.
My question is just about the capacity problem. Is that a constant problem? Or just focused during July and August, or June, July, August?
It is only during the summer months. In our original report, I believe it shows during the end of May through September. Doesn't really roll off until towards the end of September. And in twenty twenty, it was a very similar traffic pattern.
So is it
In our report from, from January.
Okay. So is it possible for this tower to, that you're proposing for Mammalukes to only be present during those months? To specifically address that capacity problem, or for it to be turned off in the other months? Because would that reduce the RF emissions? And anything else, whether it's unsiteliness or anything like that? That's my only question.
I would have to defer to Verizon. I, I can't speak for them for telling, you know, saying that they can or cannot turn the site off. As far as if turning it off would reduce emissions, yes, turning it off would reduce the emissions. And as far as the unsiteliness, it would have to be deconstructed, but I'd also have to defer to another expert.
Is there anyone here who, who's present on the call with us, or on this meeting with us, who might be able to chime in?
This is Eric Lucre. There's nobody who will be able to make a snap decision on whether a given site could be powered down for any portion of the year. So that, that would not be possible to get that answer. In terms of the appearance of the antenna, the record does include the photo simulations. Exhibit, I don't recall which exhibit number it was, but that is part of the record that came to the board.
Yes.
I mean, one can judge aesthetically if they feel that's, you know, an unattractive presentation. We've had testimony from our planner that it's not, and that we would agree to stealth it and to color it in a fashion that was consistent with the exterior of the building.
Yes, I do recall that testimony previously. Is, and that wrap that was originally proposed is still not available commercially?
That's true.
Okay, okay. I don't have any additional questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Zanich. Anyone else? Ms. Deets, go ahead.
Yes, I just was curious to know if, if there's a difference of capacity between using the 4G and the 5G. Does that take up different amount of capacity from each site?
5G is a technology that will code data differently, that will allow them to get more capacity out of the same amount of frequency that it's deployed on. Right now, it's primarily being deployed on new frequency bands. It most likely will not get deployed on frequency bands that 4G is on until there is a market base of devices that their customers have. Otherwise, it'd be stranding their, their existing customers that don't have devices capable of that yet.
Right, but that's, that's moving in that direction, right? So over
Correct.
We'll have fewer 4G users than we'll have 5G.
Correct.
And so what does that mean moving forward with the, what's being proposed with the ODS and as well as the Mammalukes site? How will that affect it in two years, three years, as more, more users go to a 5G network than from a 4G?
It is my understanding that there are no immediate plans over the next several years to turn down the 4G network. So those systems will be needed for the foreseeable future. As those plans become available, to, to turn those 4G sites into 5G systems, Verizon typically swaps out equipment, but maintains the, the same power levels that were already there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deets. Anyone else from the board? Mike, I have one more question, or maybe this is even to Rick or to Kevin. But for, for the purposes of the Verizon application, I'm assuming they're gonna establish that they need this antenna because they, they need to increase capacity in this area. What's, what's the measure of, of, I guess, additional capacity needed for us to weigh whether or not this is a true need for Verizon, or where they're putting it, just to increase capacity for an unknown amount of users that, that may want it? Is that, is there a legal standard for that as part of these regulations?
There is. Part of the standard for all FCC licensees is that you have to provide reliable service at all the locations within your service area. The measure for determining when you're at capacity is, well, it, it's a calculation that can be made. It's based on the experience that, that they observe from a given site, and in terms of the historic patterns of use. So if you have a site like Belmar two, where, albeit seasonally, but you have, you know, a steadily increasing demand in the area served by that site, such that you know that it has reached its physical capacity, as Mr. Webster said, you don't know how much more demand is out there. You know, you don't know how much, it simply never showed up because it already reached capacity. So for us, and it's, it's not a knowable thing. You know, we can't say with any certainty, other than when we observe that a site is no longer able to take on any new traffic or provide any additional service. We can't say how many potential customers, or how much user time or speed of service, you know, has been compromised or has not been met. So for us, that definitionally is not going to be a reliable level of service. But, and if I could, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna say, what's, what's the, what's the definition of reliable service?
I, I don't wanna try and quote you the regulatory definition, because I'm not able to do that. It's just, it's a standard that, you know, applies, of course, throughout the industry, and that is a standard that the FCC imposes on the licensees. the industry, and that is a standard that the FCC imposes on the licensees. Now, would it be a subjective standard? Maybe. But again, we, the objective thing we can look at is whether at a given location, we're able to provide any additional service. And when you reach capacity, definitionally, you can. And you need to find some other way to provide it within that same general geographic area.
And would it be the same for a day compared to three months, compared to six months? If you were at capacity, does that represent unreliable service if you're at capacity for one day?
No, there's, you know, it's, again, somewhat subjective standard, but we look at, and it's true, I think of all the carriers, when they're looking at a given site and the history of use and capacity demands, you'll often have days, you know, maybe a holiday if you're in a shore location or even non-shore locations, or other times when you're trying to go past capacity, the demand's going to be higher. But we're looking at basically consistently above capacity or at capacity and long-term use patterns. You know, if you see demand climbing in a given location, you can generally safely predict that the demand's not going to go down simply because that's been the pattern throughout our many years now with wireless communications generally. Because there's always more devices that can be used more ways by more people, you know, they become more prevalent and, you know, demand sort of is inevitably going to increase. And then you have these particular spots along the shore where you're going to have that extra seasonal spike because your population increases by some factor.
And this is only Verizon customers, right?
Well, yeah, that's true of all carriers. I mean, whoever comes in, they can only serve their customers. So, yeah, I mean, Verizon's the biggest, so in theory, you know, maybe not true in every area, but in most areas, you're going to be reaching those people.
Thanks, Rick. I appreciate that explanation.
Sure.
Oh, just, was there any other follow-on questions from anybody? I don't see any. Back to you, Rick.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Mike one or two more questions to clarify. And I think Ms. Bell was referencing the conditional use standards. We're not, of course, a conditional use. You know, conditional use in the law is a use which is permitted as long as you meet certain enumerated conditions.
Right, I did state that.
Oh, no, I know.
Yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't implying you didn't, but I just wanted to use it sort of as the basis for my question of Mike, which is that, in terms of having done or not having done, like, a study to the north and the south of the borders of Belmar, you did state, and we did analyze, that a small cell site located in Spring Lake near the Belmar border would not itself have been sufficient to supply the service need that we have in this area. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Could I assume, or can the board members assume, that a small cell located north of the Belmar 2 site would similarly not have been able to, or would not be able to, provide the service need in this area where we propose to serve through Mama Luke's?
That is correct.
Is it theoretically possible, emphasis on theoretically, that a tower, and when I say a tower, I want to differentiate that from what we're talking about here. We're talking at Mama Luke's about canister antenna of, what, about four or five feet in height?
The canister antenna is approximately two feet in height, maybe deploying two of them while on top of each other.
So distinct from that, if we're talking about a traditional tower, which could be 100, 125, 150 feet, if a tower were to be constructed outside the boundaries of Belmar, either to the north in, is it Avon? Or to the south in Spring Lake, could that theoretically provide the service in this area that we want to provide to a small cell at Mama Luke's?
Theoretically, if a tower of sufficient height was built, it is possible, depending upon where it was built.
All right. But that would require, obviously, the introduction of a massive tower somewhere along the beachfront.
Correct.
All right. Which, safe to say that that's not a preferred design alternative if a service need can be addressed through much smaller equipment.
Correct.
Did I interrupt? Could you use a tower on Main Street if it was high enough?
It would have to be, it would have to be evaluated. I can't say yes or no. Reason being is because of the proximity to Belmar 2. The reason the coverage of these small cells is so small because they're trying to offload targeted areas. When you're building a macro site, you typically are going to put it in between two existing sites, and you're going to capture traffic that's in between those two sites. So depending upon where on Main Street, it would have to be evaluated. I can't say yes or no.
Okay. And are there other options besides the tower that you're proposing on Mama Luke's to solve this problem?
There are.
Aside from the antenna I'm asking you about, are there other smaller solutions or other solutions? What other options are there besides an antenna on Mama Luke's to fix this problem, to address the capacity issue that you're trying to rectify here?
The small cells are the other solution that Verizon uses for capacity offload. So they get the small targeted areas and deploy equipment in that small targeted area.
But that's, yeah, so I understand that's the solution you're proposing, but are there other solutions for a capacity issue like this?
Without a full-blown macro site, no.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Rick, for guiding me around with that.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
I did mean to interrupt. I appreciate you letting me know. Thanks.
Mike, there was some questions asked about, in effect, why Belmar? Am I right in saying, and, you know, I know you're not an employee of Verizon Wireless, but your company has done work with Verizon Wireless and other carriers for years and years on hundreds, thousands of applications. Isn't it the case that decisions on where to pursue new installations are always going to be driven by the perceived need or the identified need, whether it's a coverage need or a capacity need?
That's correct.
So, does it, other than that consideration, does it come into play for the carriers that, you know, it's town A versus town B, and maybe town B also has a need, but in town A, you've identified that you have a need that you have to take care of right now?
Yes, that will typically end up prioritizing areas.
I mean, I guess that's a much better way of saying it. They have to prioritize, right?
Yes.
And you can't do everything and serve or address all of your service needs at the same time.
Correct.
And again, to go back to our starting point, Verizon Wireless has definitely identified a service need at this site.
Yes, they have.
Thank you. I have nothing more for Mike right now.
Chairman, I have one more question, please.
Sure.
Okay, so Mike, the tower that you're considering on top of Mama Luke's, does that service any of the Spring Lake area?
No.
Or does that service only Belmar?
The way it's designed, it's targeted just to serve a couple of blocks right there around Mama Luke's. So without, with the ODS, it's only targeted to go about two blocks north and two blocks south of Mama Luke's. If the ODS does not get built, it would look very similar to the report that we testified to in November, where the coverage from that site will most likely travel further down Ocean Avenue, again, near the border of Spring Lake. But I can't say for certain that you can get reliable coverage in Spring Lake from this site.
And have you done any studies in either Spring Lake or Avon or Bradley? Are they having the same problems that we're having since their beach communities?
I know that some of the beach communities have been having capacity issues, and they have built DAS systems in other beach communities. Havon and Bradley, I cannot say for sure if they have anything built. I do know that Asbury Park has had systems built. So other beach communities do have this issue, and Verizon's trying to address it with each community as they can.
Okay. Other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, before we close with Mr. Webster, I just want to make a point, and I don't know if it wasn't answered or maybe it wasn't understood correctly, but if the town demonstrated a willingness to locate what you need to do on the east side of Ocean Avenue, would Verizon be open to having those conversations with town Belmar?
I guess I'll take that. Sorry to interrupt you, Mike. The problem with that at this juncture is basically that we've been now six months into this application, and the board, with all due respect, you're of limited jurisdiction, you know, you can address the application in front of you, and you can't really bind the town or speak for the town in terms of what they would be willing to do or able to do by way of negotiation. But I guess the bigger point would be, my understanding is that the DAS system negotiations, which I know had been going on for several months, apparently have not resulted in any approval of the DAS system. And I think there, and I don't know this firsthand, but the board members may be aware, I think there was even a lawsuit filed in the not-too-distant past based on the, I don't want to characterize it, but based on the fact that the negotiations hadn't gone anywhere.
Mr. Doolery, I'm not referring, I understand the DAS issue. I have a standalone question. If the town was willing to locate something on the east side of Ocean Avenue to accommodate the need, would Verizon be willing to have those conversations with the town?
I appreciate the question. I'm not trying to dodge answering it certainly, but I can't speak for Verizon on that because there's so many variables to it. Would, we don't know from an RF perspective if whatever it is we might be able to construct with the town's approval on the east side of Ocean Avenue would provide the same benefits that we've identified would come from Mama Luke's. And also, just in practical terms, what could be done over there? I mean, Mama Luke's site has been, you know, identified and engineered. We know that, you know, all the things that we need to look at are covered there, that the building can handle the capacity, that it will give us the service needs we want, and that we can do it in a way that we think is, you know, reasonably unobtrusive. I'm not sure how you would get that out of the other side.
If you were on the earlier call, though, the commitment of that property to be basically commercial now where it's a residential zoning really is, it's a severe treatment and conversion, where if the town was willing to make that accommodation that I described, you know, it's reasonable that Verizon would at least entertain that possibility and perhaps pursue it. And I think the town, you know, possibly might be willing in light of, you know, trying to get matters settled and accommodate Verizon, be willing to have, you know, those conversations. So I would just advise, and Mr. Kenny, I'd like it to go on the record, that these questions were asked, and I'm not sure that Verizon said yes to the willingness to have those conversations.
No, 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 thank you.
Well, and if I could, just follow up on that. The problem with not, my not being able to say yes, number one, is that I'm not authorized by Verizon, as we're here tonight at this hearing, to say yes or no. I'm not, so I cannot say no any more than I can say yes. But again, also, we are six months into it, and if that's something the town was interested in, it would have been, you know, much better for us to know as many months ago as we could have. And I do have to wonder if that's the direction the town really would be willing to go in if there's such an issue, as there seems to be with the DAS system, which would be, I think visually at a minimum, much less obtrusive than whatever would be needed to be located on the east side of Ocean Avenue to replicate, you know, what we're going to get from the Mama Luke's site. The other thing I wanted to touch on is, and I hope to clarify, is the site, Mama Luke's site is commercial now. And I understand its grandfathered in, and that limits what a person can do there, and, you know, certainly can't expand it, et cetera. But right now, it is commercial. One of the things that we were trying to accomplish in reaching out to Mr. Peters, the owner, after one of the last sessions, was to help address the concerns that some of the board members had about the fact that there's commercial use there, which, you know, maybe would continue indefinitely or, worst-case scenario, that if the underlying commercial restaurant use were to stop, that somehow Verizon Wireless would still remain in operation of the building and the building would remain as a commercial, quote-unquote, site. And the way we tried to address that, subject, of course, to what Mr. Peters may tell you tonight if he chooses to speak, is to have an agreement that there would be a sunset, that basically a 10-year sunset had an agreement between Verizon and the owner of the property, that after that 10 years, if the owner wished to change the use of the property, to have it torn down and put up condos, to do whatever legal thing, you know, you might want to do with it, that he would have the right to terminate Verizon's lease at that point with no penalty. Now, before the 10 years, of course, like any other landlord, you would have to work something out with Verizon if he chose to go that route. But, you know, we can do that 10-year limitation, which I think does go a distance toward addressing the worry, if it's a worry for the board members, that this, if approved, these antennas might have, you know, a 30- or 40-year lifespan, even though the underlying building might not continue to be used for commercial use, or worse yet, that the fact that we're there would prevent the building from being used for some other residential purpose. So we, I think we can address that, and I think that would address that, separate and apart from, you know, other questions.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Mr. Gregg had a question along that line.
Mr. Doolery, along that line, if this building were to be damaged or destroyed, say completely, what kind of arrangements would they have with the landlord, the owner of the building, and you with your lease? I would hate to see just an antenna put up on the site at the height that you'd need it with no building there. I don't know why. I'm wondering what would happen then?
It's a good question. But what would not happen is our antenna and nothing else from the property, because the approval, if we get approval, that we got would be for a very specific installation located on the roof of the building. And if the building is no longer there and can't be rebuilt or isn't rebuilt, you know, maybe legally it couldn't be rebuilt, maybe the landlord would at that point make a decision not to rebuild it. Either way, if the building is gone, we're gone. And there may be, you know, issues that need to be resolved at that point between Verizon and landlord, but that's between them and doesn't tie the hands of the borrower in any way. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question, please.
Sure.
I'm just trying to understand, Belmar 2, which you said the capacity is loaded, Mike. So there was no study done on Belmar 2? We don't even know how many antennas are up there? We don't know if any antennas can go there and upgrade the system? You have all the studies done on Mama Luke, what it will do, what it will provide. Why wasn't no studies done on Belmar 2 to know exactly what equipment is there and if any of that equipment could be updated?
Let me clarify what I mentioned earlier. The existing systems that are at Belmar 2, replacing them with other antennas or other transmitters does not change the amount of frequency available for Verizon to use at that site. Therefore, just by swapping out antennas or transmitters, doesn't gain them any additional capacity at that site. That's why they need to find other locations to target new sites to offload that traffic at, because they can reuse that frequency at another site.
But what you're saying is at that site, there's no room to add any additional antennas?
That I do not know. I can't comment as to what we are or are not allowed to do or what we are or are not able to do at that site. I don't have any history of that.
If additional antennas could be added to that site, would that resolve the problem?
Depending upon what antennas are deployed there and how they are able to be configured on the roof, they may be able to get some more targeted coverage from antennas down Ocean Avenue or down to a different part of the town. But without having any studies done, I can't tell you how targeted of an area that would be or
Well, my question is, if already Belmar 2 was a location, why wasn't it studied to see additional antennas could be added there, rather than going out to another property in Belmar?
Traditionally, most of these macro sites are deployed as three-sector sites. Very rarely do they get deployed as more than three sectors, just because of the angle that these antennas typically cover. So because of that, once a site has reached three sectors, they typically move to a new location to offload traffic from another location in a targeted facility.
But potentially, it could happen.
There are some sites, yes, Site O are four, or maybe even five sectors. It has happened in the past, yes.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malongo. And Ms. Zanovich, should I say you had a question?
I think it's more just a question, I think, to Mr. Webster from a question that Mr. Delucry had asked him to kind of confirm, I think, about the, either the gap or the capacity problem. And it's gotten, I've gotten a little confused, but I feel like Mr. Delucry's question to Mr. Webster was, like, definitively trying to find out or state, you know, that there is a gap or a capability problem. But if our problem here is confined to three months out of the year, or four months out of the year, does that equal a true gap? Can the gap be, I know someone had, like, the other extreme a couple, a while ago in the conversation, you know, does one day equal, like, a gap of not having enough capacity? But this isn't even half of the year, or every other day. This is three months, three months during the year, and probably just really on given days. So does that, and I guess maybe what is the legal standard? And, you know, so does this fit the legal standard for that, to determine that a gap does exist? Did I break up?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'll defer to Mr. Delucry as to what the legal definition of a gap is. I know that the way that we use it in our report, a gap can be defined either as coverage or as capacity. So in this case, we use the term gap to represent a capacity deficiency.
Right. The other piece of that is that the carriers are the ones you have to identify when they have inadequate service. And if you want to call it a gap, measured either as an area, physical area that's not covered at all, or an area that's not getting sufficient capacity coverage. And it's a common sense kind of thing to an extent, because you don't deploy your resources in places where you're going to get minimal service benefit. And here, which is common along the shore, you've got, granted, a shorter span during which you're at or above capacity, but it's an area of very high, very intense use during those months. So, you know, if you had, pick a town or a situation where you didn't have the influx of people that you have along the shore in the summer, and you're having a steady uptick in use just based on the fact that there are more devices and more uses for the devices, you know, you may reach capacity, but you can project, in some of these cases, that, you know, you're only going to be maybe percentage points above your capacity level over a given period of time. Here, we know that we're at capacity. And the fact that it may only be for a short period of time each year, it's a lot of uses, potentially that you're missing. And I don't know the numbers in Belmar, how many people on a given day you might have on the beach. I'm from Brigantine, our population swells during the summer, and, you know, we have the same conditions, I'm sure you see. Everybody packed together, and it's pretty much constant, maybe not every single day, but it's going to be pretty much constant, I believe Mike testified. May into late September, you're seeing the same demand. So it's not an exact standard, but it's, you know, a common sense business standard where you look at, what is it we can provide, and we know that we're not providing it over a fairly substantial number of weeks and months, which is, you know, what drives the prioritization of one state over another.
Okay, thanks. I don't think I have any other questions.
Anyone else from the board? All right, Mr. Delucry, thank you.
So, no other questions, Mr. Webster? At this point, I have no more for you.
Okay. I imagine you're going to call your next witness?
I am, but I think it needs a little introduction, maybe.
You know what, Mr. Delucry, I had to say one quick thing. Mr. Chairman, just for the record, and getting way ahead of myself, I know we didn't open it up to the public yet, and I know you had said, Mr. Chairman, hey, maybe I need some outside help. So just in that regard, I just wanted to make sure that we're not dismissing Michael Webster yet, that he still has to be an helpful for public and maybe future. But I just want to just put that on the record.
Yes, understood. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Which actually ties into what I was going to say about our proposed second and last witness, Mr. Kronk. As you know, he's our professional planner, and our purpose in having him here, at least in part, was to have him for the record restate his conclusions as to how the site satisfies the applicable legal standards for the relief that we've requested, which, you know, to the extent, if that was shaped or changed at all by any of the testimony that happened tonight, we could still do that. But if the board ends up planning to bring in, or deciding to bring in additional witnesses, expert or otherwise, then, you know, obviously, we would reserve the right to have Mr. Kronk, again, revisit his conclusions.
And Mr. Chairman, it would be my opinion that would be, obviously, a very fair request that we would, you know, address that if that situation unfolds.
Certainly.
Thank you. Mr. Kronk?
Yes. Good evening.
You are, of course, still under oath from your last appearance before the board.
Yes, I am.
And the board was familiarized with your professional credentials at the last session, actually, the last two sessions.
Can you just state your name and address for the record, sir?
Yes, Timothy M. Kronk, K-R-O-N-K. His address, P.O. Box 465, Mendham, New Jersey.
Okay. And you're pre...
So, Mr. Kronk?
I swear him again, just because we support the other podcast person. He's swearing that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent that what he can be truthful, that's why I'm sure he'll be glad.
I do.
Thank you. And you're testifying in your capacity as a professional planner, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kronk, you've been with us throughout the entirety of this Zoom presentation, is that right?
I have been here for every minute of this application since we started last year.
Right. Based, and as I recall, you had previously expressed to the board your opinion as to whether the application met the applicable legal standards for the relief we requested, is that right?
That is correct.
And what was your conclusion previously?
My previous conclusion was that the application by Verizon Wireless did satisfy the statutory criteria for the grant of the D1, D6 use variances, as well as the bulk deviation for the front yard setback. And that the additional testimony that has been provided since my initial analysis has taken, took place in the form of the additional radio frequency testimony, the radio frequency compliance testimony, and the site acquisition testimony only went to reinforce my original conclusion regarding this application.
Right. Just so it's clear, Mr. Kronk, when you say the testimony, are you referring not just to Mr. Webster's testimony, but also to the colloquy between board members and our experts and myself, and the presentation by the board's expert planner, Ms. Bell?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. That is the entirety of Mr. Kronk's testimony.
Thank you. Did any of the board members or Ms. Bell have any questions for Mr. Kronk? No? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Zanovich.
Mr. Kronk, could you provide some details as to, I mean, you just provided a conclusion. Could you provide some explanation behind your conclusion?
Sure. I was actually, I had finished my testimony at a prior hearing, and it was rather lengthy, so I was kind of just providing a summary based upon the additional testimony that was provided. Are you looking for something in particular? I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to answer the question without providing the full analysis that was done originally.
Yeah, Mr. Kronk, I think if you could provide, you know, a brief summary even of your previous testimony, and how you feel that this application meets the statutory criteria for a use variance, I think that would be beneficial just for the board members in reviewing this application.
Okay. Applications by Verizon Wireless. Verizon Wireless is a licensed SEC provider of wireless telecommunications services in this portion of New Jersey. We are on a location that is a particularly suited location for several reasons. First, and most importantly, is the radio frequency testimony that we have heard. Currently, Verizon Wireless does have a coverage deficiency in this portion of Belmar, and the radio frequency engineer has testified that the location of Verizon Wireless antennas on the subject property at the subject height would alleviate the coverage deficiencies that they are currently experiencing. The site is also particularly suited for two interesting non-conformities. Number one, the height of this building is one of the taller buildings in the area. So by locating on the flat rooftop of this structure, they are able to get the antennas to an elevation for this line-of-sight technology that can actually see over the shorter buildings in the area. So the actual height of the building, even though it is a non-conformity, is actually one of the things that makes this site particularly suited, is that additional height that can be achieved from the top of this structure. The site is also, as you're aware, a commercial use. This use is not permitted in the zone, and even though we're in a residential zone, the commercial non-conformity here is another reason that the subject property is particularly suited. Of course, the, this use is analyzed using the four-step CECA balancing test. In the CECA balancing test, first, we identify the public interest at stake. Second, determine what detrimental effects would ensue from the grant of the variance. Third, impose reasonable conditions to help ameliorate the negative impacts of the application. And fourth, perform the actual balancing test between the positive and negative aspects of the application. With regard to the positive criteria, of course, this is a use that has become integral to our society. Started out, it was, you know, kind of a novelty, personal thing, but it has become integral to our businesses. It has become integral to public services, police, fire, emergency services, roadside services. All of those things are aspects of what we rely on for wireless telecommunications services. With the second step of the CECA analysis, we focus on the negative aspects of the application. And as I testified to and presented the photo simulations, the photo simulations were done to provide what is the major negative aspect of this type of application, and that is actually the visibility. As we moved along to the third step of the CECA analysis, I think our discussions regarding ameliorating conditions pretty much focused on the concealment of the antennas in different types of film. Our original application was for a mirror-type film that is no longer available, so we did present different color swatches that would be acceptable as a condition of approval. This evening, I guess that may have changed a little. We do have another reasonable condition that we could analyze under the CECA analysis, and that was related to the property owner's agreement to allow this use to sunset, or that, I, it's not really a condition yet, so I just want to be careful on how I phrase it, Mr. Delucry, that the...
A little alleged condition, we got it.
Yes. The offer is on the table to make it a condition. How is that? That the wireless telecommunications use would not assist in perpetuating the continued existence of the non-conforming commercial use in the residential property. And the property owner also agreed to not allow any other carriers on the roof, or on the building, to alleviate some of the concerns about multiple carriers ending up here. So those are two new aspects of the CECA analysis that were presented this evening. And as a fourth step of the CECA analysis, we do perform the actual balancing test, where we're balancing the promotion of the general welfare through enhanced telecommunications services against the negative impacts, i.e., primarily the visibility, and with the ameliorating conditions, and determine whether, on balance, the board can grant this variance without a substantial detriment to the public good. The standard here with that negative visibility is not whether it can be seen. The standard is, does this visibility, when balanced against the promotion of the general welfare and the ameliorating conditions, rise to the level of a substantial detriment? And I certainly do believe the board will find that this application can be approved without rising to the level of a substantial detriment. I think that's my summary.
Can you define substantial detriment?
Can I define that? I would say that's one of those things that would be subjective, but in this case, I certainly don't believe that anything to do with visibility of a small four-foot canister on the, at a 40-foot elevation on a commercial property, when balancing against the promotion of general welfare, would rise to that level.
But it's subjective.
It's subjective, and yes.
I know we really didn't suss through it, but it sounds like the owner, the property owner, is talking about not allowing other antennas on the building. I don't, I, it's my understanding that there's a federal regulation that permits colocations. As a town, I don't think Belmar can stop other providers from co-locating on antennas. How could a property owner do that?
Well, I think the, well, I'll leave it to Mr. Delucry, but as a condition of the zoning board, I certainly do believe, think that would be a reasonable condition if the applicant did accept it.
Mr. Kennedy, I mean, can we, how does that work with a federal law? I mean...
I don't know. I believe there were some federal regulations, which we've dealt with in the past, regarding colocation and somewhat permissive nature of the same. So I don't know that for sure. Christine, do you have any information on that, or...
I would just advise against prohibiting colocation. I think that, you know, colocation is generally encouraged, because you certainly don't want to discourage other self-producers from locating within Belmar, not having, to be able to provide the same amount of service Verizon would be. And additionally, you don't want to have, you know, an antenna pop up on the building across the street because they were unable to locate with, on the existing antenna. antenna pop up on the building across the street because they were unable to locate with, on the existing antenna.
Making that a condition of the application would put the borough at risk of litigation that Verizon would not have to be party to, because the restriction would be being made by this board and not Verizon, and then we would be subject to the lawsuit. So I find that to be a hollow remedy to the concern, and it's really not a valid approach.
Well, if I may, address that real quickly. Remember, the distinction that we're talking about here is not a board imposing a condition. This is voluntarily, a voluntary act by the property owner. The property owner has no interest in co-locating or having somebody co-locate on his building, and it is his property.
He can change his mind tomorrow. He can change his mind tomorrow.
If he has agreed to it, and if that then becomes a condition because he agreed to it, then no, he can't change his mind tomorrow.
He's agreed to it with Verizon?
We, yeah. I mean, Verizon honestly doesn't have a stake in this, other than if it helps us get past concerns, then we like it. But, you know, once we're there, we've accomplished what we need to accomplish to serve our customers.
I, I think we're going to have to go with Christine and Kevin's approach in terms of protecting the borough from potential litigation, and making that a condition of the application could be problematic for the town.
Right. I would even say that, you know, the inability to co-locate on this location does not make it particularly suited to the use.
That, I, and I'll ask Mr. Kronk to address that if he'd like to, but that is actually irrelevant to the particular suitability of the site. The fact that it has an odd configuration that may, just by reason of the way the co-location regulations are worded, may prevent somebody from co-locating, does not mean that the site is not suited for the actual application that's in front of the board. And the reason for that is quite simply here. If you look at the design of the building, it has one place that's suitable for the location of telecommunications, but then that's the place we're taking. The fact that the rest of the building, the difference that if you had a very small roof building.
Yeah, but isn't, aren't we supposed to be serving the betterment of the community? And by finding a building where only one company can be served, we're really not, right? We're only serving Verizon customers by that. So I guess I'm hearing what Ms. Bell is saying, because, you know, you're saying that it's particularly suitable for Verizon because you can lock out your competitors from putting anything on there. But from the town's perspective and the people that are using their phones, this would not be benefiting, I don't know how many providers are, three or four? You know, it would be eliminating those from being used. No?
Maybe, maybe my answer was not clear, but the, our position is not that it's a great site because we're able to freeze other people out. The issue of co-location was never brought up by Verizon, it was brought up by the board, and was brought up in the context of concern that people would be co-locating there. And Ms. Bell has pointed out, Mr. Kennedy as well, you know, valid reasons why a town, as a matter of policy, might want to encourage co-location. But we looked into the possibility of doing something voluntary on the part of the owner, specifically because the board had concerns about whether there could be co-location, which in turn was what led us to analyze the building and present the testimony that, you know, not because we chose this building for this reason, because we didn't. You know, the building was chosen because it was the tallest building in an area where we needed it to be. But the fact is that the building, because of its odd configuration in our analysis, wouldn't support co-location anyway. So the fact that it's not an issue at all, as a matter of policy, you know, being pro or anti-co-location, this site works because of where it is and how tall it is. If we had a building comparable to it, that had a different configuration, that was, would serve the same need, that would be, that would be in play. But from the testimony that was presented at the two prior hearings, you know, we did an exhaustive search. There simply isn't a building anywhere located that could, that's as tall and that has the same profile along the beach in the area that we need to serve. So co-location really was never an issue for us, and it didn't drive Verizon's decision where to go or not go. And, you know, wherever the board feels about co-location, we're kind of fine with it.
No, I agree. It is an issue, I guess, but if we're unable to put a condition legally in place, and we, it seems like we wouldn't be able to, or it wouldn't be enforceable, then, you know, it's still an issue, and then it brings in the question the suitability of the area. I guess I just wanted to ask the question. So I got my answer, and I'm good. And I'm interested in to hear, you know, what other members in the public especially. I'd really like to hear some public comment if we can get to it tonight.
Mr. Kronk, I just have one question for you. In talking about this particular location, you said that it would eliminate a coverage deficiency, but I think this is very similar to a question I asked Mr. Webster earlier. He stated that there was an unknown amount of traffic. So how do you, how do you know this site will eliminate the coverage deficiency?
I'm not an RF engineer, so I am relying on Mr. Webster's testimony that there, based upon their analysis, that there is traffic that needs to be offloaded and that this location would work from a radio frequency perspective.
Mr. Kronk, I think you may have had some additional testimony you wanted to present, but let me, if I could, ask you a question.
Sure.
By way of comparison. If we observed a two-lane highway, which was almost always clogged with traffic, would we be able to determine that that road has reached capacity? Just as a general question.
Sure.
And from that, logically, we would conclude that we need either another road or we need to widen the road.
Yes.
Is that correct? Do we know, would we know with any certainty, could we know with any certainty, how many cars will use the road once it's been expanded or a second road's been added?
Probably not.
So we have to go by what we can observe in terms of the usage patterns and the trends over time. And in that scenario, we would know only that the road we have cannot accommodate any more cars.
Correct.
So in, does that translate conceptually? Do you think to
Translates very well to the situation.
Mr. Kronk, is it considered good planning practice to build a parking lot for Black Friday, for a commercial shopping center for Black Friday shopping? And have, you know, 95% of the spaces open most days of the year?
I like the highway analogy better than the parking lot analogy. Because I think it parallels better. If the highway, if you come up to the highway and you can't get on, you go someplace else.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Thank you. Go somewhere else.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Oates.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Mr. Oates, I know you're very strongly about your statement.
Oh, sorry. When you, when you, when you had a question for Mr. Oates, I think we ought to focus speaking with Tim Kronk for now, and allow Mr. Delacry to introduce Mr. Oates and any testimony they may have for him.
I'm sorry, I thought he was the plan.
Mr. Oates for now, if you don't mind.
Oh, is there a question for Mr. Kronk, though? The plan.
Good, Mr. Zanovich.
So, theoretically, would this, should this application be approved, would the existence of a building, say, next door to Mount Maloox, that's slightly shorter, would that be an appropriate site to, for other carriers to solve the same kind of a problem that Verizon is experiencing? So that we would be in this position again with other applications?
Each carrier has a different footprint, because they're not all on the same locations. Even though when they're on the same locations, they're at different elevations. And each carrier also has different, you know, you know, spike areas for capacity. Just because Verizon has a capacity need they need to address in this area doesn't mean that the other carriers do. So it would have to be a situation where their carrier would have to have a deficiency related to coverage or capacity and would be able to, you know, solve it at that location at the lower height. So I can't, I can't say definitely one way or another. But just because one carrier has that issue here doesn't mean every carrier does.
And I understand that, and if they do, you know, just hypothetically, would it be? Well, I won't go down that question. Okay, I'll move on.
No, I, let me just follow up one thing on that. And actually, if another carrier came here and had a similar situation, the first thing that carrier would need to do is go back to your ordinance, review the two permitted locations, and make sure that they could not use those permitted locations before they ever came, you know, out to this area and tried to justify a use variance. They would have to rule out those permitted locations, just like we did on this application.
Could I interrupt? I thought, I thought Mike said that they hadn't reviewed other locations, such as Belmar II, or possibly a tower on Main Street.
We did have testimony on the two locations that are permitted in the ordinance.
I'm not sure I heard the same thing.
First night.
So there were studies on the, on the, on the Belmar II location? That additional antennas can't solve this problem?
Oh, no, no, not, not the existing site, the locations in the wireless ordinance.
So are you saying additional studies should have been done on any, any possible location where antennas are allowed, to see if they can solve this problem first, before this application was made?
We did address the two locations in the Belmar ordinance where the wireless telecommunications are permitted. Those locations were addressed and ruled out, yes.
John, I think he's talking about the Department of Public Works, and there's another one that's listed, Public Works Yard at 13th Avenue, West Avenue, and then the Block 10th and 11th. There's two that are specifically cited. That's what he's referring to, not
That's what I'm referring to.
Not Belmar II. So I just wanted, I have it in front of me, so I just wanted to
That's fair. Would you have to look at locations in other towns next to us?
If there was a I'll, yes, I believe we did have testimony regarding other tall structures in other municipalities, yes, that were addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Zanovich, I jumped right in when you were talking. I apologize.
Okay. Mr. Kronk, I have one more question. So you talked about substantial detriment, and you applied it to visibility of that the tube, that the
The canister, yes.
Canister, thank you.
Which is the primary negative impact associated with this use, yes.
So so you're saying, in your opinion, visibility of this object, of this antenna, is the primary detrimental feature?
Yes.
And not the, even, even with the, you know, the offer of sunsetting the use? So in your opinion, the kind of extending the commercial use of this building in this residential zone, that is not a detrimental effect?
It would be a minor, and I really thought that the condition that the property owner was willing to agree to would satisfy that, that issue.
Okay.
I guess we're going to have to do some more research on that. But yes, I, I understand that is a negative too, but I thought we had addressed that as a reasonable condition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanovich. Anybody else from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I'm sorry. Before, I just read the name underneath, Chris DeKronk. Can you tell me what the benefits of the application would be if you were to get approved?
The benefits of the application. One, the first one is Verizon would be able to, you know, continue to build a seamless and ubiquitous wireless telecommunications network that is part of their FCC license. As part of that ubiquitous network, they would be providing wireless telecommunications services to the residents, the businesses, the visitors, and anybody who needs to use emergency services in the, in Belmar.
Just for that location?
Well, it's, it's not just that location. It's part of the network. This location here, as the radio frequency engineer testified to, is also offloading, you know, another site in the area. So you could be down by that other site, and there could be a capacity problem, and you not be able to make a call there, but this site is helping offload it. So it's not just, it's not just this building or this block. It's part of a, it's part of a network.
Okay, you're talking about Beat Site 2, correct?
Yes, Belmar 2.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Blingo. Mr. Kronk, I thought, I thought Mike said that we could still make emergency calls, even if, even if this application wasn't approved. Are you saying otherwise?
Emerg, a 911 call you could make, but, you know, roadside services or a, you know, non-emergency police, you know, call, those type of things would still be service calls that you would want to get through.
Okay.
Yes, he did testify that 911 calls would go through even if the site was blocked.
Well, would police, would non-emergency police calls go through?
I, actually, I can't answer that question.
I thought that's what you just said. I'm sorry.
I'd have to follow up with Mike on that.
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough. All right. Anybody else from the board? All right, Mr. Delacry, I see no more questions. We'll go back to you.
You're muted.
Now, unmuted, I can say I have an additional question for Mr. Kronk.
Thank you. Rick, we're at 10:05. Typically, we try to wrap up around 10:30 or so. I don't know if you're, what you're planning for the rest of the night, but I would ask that you consider that for whatever is next.
Well, the real question, I guess, is, and I know we have probably some number of members of the public that want to be heard. I'm assuming that just from the number of participants that we had. There seems to be one open question, which I would ask the board to resolve one way or the other, which is, there was mention of whether or not the board was going to seek to hire its own expert for radio frequency analysis of some kind. If the answer to that is no, then I guess we, I would suggest we would move maybe to the public portion and see what can be accomplished in the time remaining. If the answer, however, is that the board is going to do that, that obviously would impact not only, you know, our additional desire to present testimony and cross-examine whomever it is that the board may retain, but would, I imagine, affect the nature of some of the questions from the public.
Certainly. Let me throw it out to the board. I mean, I'll offer my, my opinion is that I do think, as a board for the town, we need, you know, our own expert to review this testimony and these reports to to ground truth everything. Does any of the board have a feeling one way or the other on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we should have some additional input. We're not experts on it. And I agree with that. We should have some additional input.
Mr. Chairman, I, I feel the town's willingness and ability to fund such a study or such an expert to come up against Verizon's volumeness and multitude of prior cases to bring this into the safety concern. Not that, that's not a true concern of people, and I don't mean to discount it, but it really goes beyond the variances that were being asked in front of us, and it's outside of the purview of the board to be making a safety determination as some sort of breakthrough case that we're going to do nationally against Verizon. It would ultimately have to result in that. So I really discourage trying to So I really discourage trying to pursue that activity because I do think it is one that that other towns have attempted to do and have not been successful at it. So, you know, I do think we should stick to the height, the use, the master plan, and and things that are within our right to make decisions on. And the safety aspect is probably outside of what is
You know what, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
If if I could jump in, this is Kevin. Could I, just for the record, we were fortunate to have Christine tonight. Big thumbs up to her because I thought I thought she's been excellent and gave us some great guidance. Would you think it would be inappropriate for me to ask Christine to her opinion as to whether or not there's? I have some things I want to say, but I sort of would like her opinion first as to whether she feels the need for outside review. And the only other thing I would say, just ladies and gentlemen, as we're doing this analysis, and I'll go into more of this in a little bit, but typically, the way this would be funded is the applicant pays escrow to the town. And the applicant pays for, when I do a resolution, they they pay me, they pay the borough pays me, but they pay me through the applicant's escrow money. And presumably, that would be the same way if we felt we needed an additional person. And I don't know that we we will. But, Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I asked Christine Bell what her opinion is on that issue?
No, please do.
I mean, because Christine, I don't know. I mean, you are a thousand times more qualified than I am. But in terms of you and your credentials and some of the things that we talked about tonight, some of the questions, do you have any particular feelings as to?
Well, I think that ultimately, it's the board's decision. But I think that in determining whether or not they feel this application meets the criteria for a D1 use variance, they need to, they need to know if this site actually has a gap in coverage, if this site will be alleviating a gap in coverage or capacity. Because they need to know that this, you know, this location is necessary or needed or provides, you know, anything over mediocre service. So if they do not feel they're able to make that determination from the testimony that's been given and the information that's been provided, and they think that an RF engineer who could help explain the information to them would be beneficial in helping them make their determination on the use variance, then I would recommend it. If they feel they have all the information they need to determine whether or not this application meets the statutory criteria for a D1 use variance, then I don't think it's necessary.
All right, and then and then I guess if I could just say, Mr. Chairman, because I, Mr. Fitzgerald brought up some really excellent points that I would could I just give a little bit of a thing about? I guess we need to have a discussion as to whether or not we need or we want to have Christine, who would we? Not who, but would we hire a what, an engineer or a radio frequency engineer? Or, I mean, what's the title of the person that we would need to retain?
You would need to hire a radio frequency engineer, someone with similar qualifications to Mr. Webster, I would assume.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, if I, do you mind if I just have a little bit more talk on this issue?
Of course, please.
And the only reason, because I think Mr. Dulukri said, and rightfully said, hey, if you need, if you're going down that road, then, you know, if you're not going to go down that road, then I don't have to go down that road. And if you are going to go down that road, then I'm going to have to do X. So I think we need to affirmatively say, yes, we feel we should do that, or no, we should not do that. And just, I guess the only thing that I would say is, at least in in my, I mean, this is a pretty technical hearing, and I think, Mr. Chairman, at one point, you said, ooh, some of this sounds like great to me. But sometimes, if there ever is litigation, and we always hope there's not litigation, sometimes the courts will rely on whether or not there is uncontroverted testimony. So sometimes, it's it's good to have an extra review. Another thing is there were some, I guess this is not what I I don't know if there's ever any typical case, let alone a typical telecommunications case, but this certainly seems to have some more, you know, interest or more angles than than the typical, not the, you know, including the issues of the seasonal capacity and the issues with the impact of the the DAS. In fact, tonight, I think we heard, and that was the first time I've heard it, that the DAS was applied for the the Board, or the Ocean Avenue project was applied for with model looks in mind. I didn't know that they were coordinated. And I think there was some interesting testimony or questions raised tonight about how is capacity defined and interpreted and enforced? And I think, Mr. Chairman, you sort of raised a question, and you didn't necessarily use these words, but I think you sort of said, you know, basically about service versus optimal service and what's the standard? And I know Christine Bell had brought up the issues about should we have a greater, per the ordinance, have the more information regarding that study or inventory that the ordinance requires? I think Christine said it was regarding other sites in Belmar and within one one mile. And I think there were some discussions about other options. And I think there was some testimony tonight that I heard that the applicant's witnesses said, which I found interesting. I found the whole thing interesting, which sort of says a lot about me. But but I think it, they talked about some DAS systems were built in other beach communities. So I would sort of like to look into what what the impacts were and how they were handled. And if there's a question that the board feels they need more information, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for the applicant to pay the escrow so that we could have an extra pair of eyes looking at it. Now, it is not, you know, this is not unusual. Sometimes, we have a, we would need to retain a traffic engineer. Sometimes, we would need to retain, you know, a specific engineer. So depending on what the facts call. And I think, you know, one thing I think Mr. Fitzgerald said, which was so correct, is, is I'm not aware of any legal cases which have upheld, you know, concerns about the health issues, on the emission levels. So, you know, if we were having someone look at it, we could, I mean, but I just, I think that 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 I'm not aware of any case law which which focuses on that. And I think what Mr. Fitzgerald was sort of saying is, is, you know, we're going to have to focus on capacity. Is there a capacity issue? And then the other thing is, we talked about the the co-location. And I do think Mr. Dulukri is right. I think the fear of the co-location or the concerns about co-location, it did come up as a board issue, as as he corrected. And I think he was offering a olive branch, so to speak, with the idea that it would be co-location. And I think it's the, I don't want his to, we don't ever want to look a gift horse in the mouth, and we certainly appreciate the offer. But I think what it was, from what all you were saying, upon further review and upon further analysis and upon Christine Bell's review, and again, remember, this was her first time being here, she was sort of saying, hey, you know, there's some societal interests that are not necessarily advanced if you don't necessarily co-locate. And of course, Mr. Chairman, as you pointed out, you've got that very permissive federal regulations regarding the the co-location. So anyway, against all that thing, what we know is what we always said and what we started out at the very beginning of this hearing when we talked about the process is you have an important decision to make, and it's got important long-term consequences. And the most important thing, as is always the case, is that you make a fully informed decision. So I guess we would have discussion if if board members feel the need that they're going to want a radio frequency engineer to look at this. We should decide that now because you wouldn't want to, I mean, because it's going to depend on how we finish the rest of the evening. And I would also say that it is possible that this radio frequency engineer that we would retain, it is possible that he or she might come back and agree 100% with everything that Michael Webster said. It might be that they agree with 0% of what Michael Webster and the other Rich's team member said. Or it might be that they agree with 50%. You know, I don't know. It's complicated stuff. So I would defer. I think it's a fair topic. And I would defer to the board members as to whether or not it's something you feel you would, you and by extension, the borough, would benefit by having this information.
Thanks, Mr. Kevin. Did anybody want to comment left on the board?
I ask just a really quick question. It's my understanding from reading the local news articles about the ODS, what's going on with the township, is that Verizon has brought suit because there wasn't a decision made in a timely manner. And I was just curious if if we are under any of those similar time restraints we have postponed it several times. And I was just curious if if we push it, keep, continue to push it out, if we run the risk of the same thing.
Excellent, excellent question. And and again, I just sort of heard recently about about the litigation which which Mr. Dulukri brought up tonight. And I've not seen that complaint. I don't know what the issue is. And I can't speak on it because I'm not the borough attorney. But to your, Ms. Bates, to your excellent question, as with every application that we have to adjudicate, there is a certain timeframe within which you have to adjudicate the decision. And if we don't adjudicate the decision within that timeframe or any agreed-upon extension, there is a potential for automatic approval. So anytime we would continue the case, we always ask for the applicant's consent to extend, consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act. I know Mr. Dulukri has been a very, very, very wonderful in this presentation, has been very wonderful in giving the extensions previously. I know they're anxious. Everybody's anxious. I get that. And I know we've, just for the record, for what it's worth, we've already had two special meetings, and I think we're having two more special meetings in the summer. It's very rare for a board to have special meetings. It's very rare for a board to have special meetings in the summer. And it's very, 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 very rare to have two special meetings in the summer. But anyway, so the reality is, we would have to, if we're going to continue this, we would have to get the consent of the applicants. And if, in the very, very, very unlikely event, they did not consent, the question would then be, okay, well, then we have to call the vote tonight. And did the applicant prove their case to your satisfaction, or are these open items? But I, you know, we would ask, if we were going to do this, we would ask for Mr. Dulukri's consent. Excellent question. That was a very long answer to a very short and wonderful question. But yes, it is an issue.
Thank you.
Shouldn't it be pointed out that the part of the extension was caused by technical difficulties of which we had no?
Absolutely.
You did? So, you know,
Absolutely.
Reason we're here now is because of technical difficulties the applicant had at the previous meeting, so.
Yeah, and and it's all noted. And I would tend to think that they would not have an issue with consenting. But obviously, I can't speak for that. And and we would ask Mr. Dulukri that if the board wants to retain the the first radio frequency expert.
Well, actually, I think my decision on that really should come after the board's decision on what it wants to do and how it feels to handle the rest of this application. I've reached out to my client. I don't yet have an answer during circumstances whether they're ready to consent to additional time.
Correct.
I would point out at the last meeting, it wasn't, which, by the way, we granted the extension, so it had no impact at all on the board's timetable for decision-making. I did have technical issues. However, there were also only five voted members for use variance, which meant that we would have needed all five members. So that was a separate consideration. Even with full Zoom capability, we would not have been willing to go forward that night. Again, not having heard yet from my client what their response is going to be on the extension. And I don't know either where things stand in terms of the timetable for decision-making, given that the application was filed, I believe, in July of last year. It was initially scheduled in November, and then basically since that time has been carried with consent of the applicant, so.
And and there have also been some, basically, with the pandemic and emergency restrictions, some gubernatorial and legislative extensions built in there to begin with. But, you know, we, I think, Rich, my recommendation would be we have the board discussion as to whether or not they want a radio frequency person. Because if not, we just go down a whole different road, like you said. And if we do, we then are going to have to adjourn it. And we would then ask you, are you going to consent? And, you know, we'll we'll have that discussion. But you think we should, Mr. Chairman, I would, unless, you know, Mr. Dulukri or anyone else has concerns, I would say, let's hear the board's comments about or questions or feelings about retaining a radio frequency expert.
Yeah, I think that's the next step.
John, John, what what is your, what are you thinking in terms of why you would want one? I guess I'm just trying to understand, because there's kind of like two things at play. There's the safety aspect, and then there's the, is it needed? And if we're going to ask somebody to validate if it's needed, I think they would need to have substantial cooperation from Verizon to get that data. And I'm not so sure that would be readily available. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, what the angle is we're we're looking for here for this expert.
Yeah, yeah, for me, I just think it would be worthwhile to have an expert because there's, there's a couple, couple of things that I've heard that I just didn't get clear answers on. And it's really, to me, it really comes down to whether or not this antenna is needed. You know, the applicant has testified on on capacity coverage and reliable service and things like that. But they can't offer anything but a subjective definition of what that means. And in fairness, they're presenting what's subjective or presenting what what they see as the need.
Right.
I don't know that I've heard an answer, an objective answer on that.
Yeah, would we get used data, Miss, somebody, I guess, anybody that wants to answer from Verizon? Like, would would it, would an expert get that usage data so we could determine, you know, make that kind of determination? Or are we going to hire somebody, and then he's not allowed to even see any of that stuff?
Well, what I would, and that's a totally awesome question. What I would suggest is that if we retain someone, I assume, I assume that he or she would review the transcripts and or the meetings of of what was transpired. And I would assume that they would review in detail the nature of all those exhibits that all of Rich's team went through. And then if they had any questions, they would ask under oath. They would ask the applicant's witnesses. And then they would, our expert would tell us, hey, you know, what they're saying, it holds up, and it is consistent with the testimony in our reports, or it's inconsistent, but they would tell us. And if they did, again, remember, the applicant always has the burden of proving his case. So presumably, if if our expert didn't feel that the, you know, case, the burden has been satisfied, they would say that. But that's my punch, is how it would go, Chuck, but I don't know that for sure.
I agree with with Mr. Fitzgerald that probably doing this with a health orientation would probably be of little use. But I think the the capacity and the questions that you raised, John, are are very valid, and I think would be valuable to have a witness.
Anyone else?
Mr. Great? I just have to say that as much as I know about antennas, you could break on the tip of this ballpoint pen. And I would like to have somebody tell me more or ask questions and maybe explain the answers differently to me. I'm just not satisfied yet. So I'm in favor of hiring an expert. You're on.
Good, Mr. Zanovich.
I think you're on mute.
I think, your honor, I'm muted.
Uh, Mr. Zanovich, are you speaking?
Sorry, yes. Um, I would appreciate hearing from an RF engineer as well regarding the, the, uh, capacity and the gap issues, just to kind of confirm it. Um, I've tried to go over the reports, um, and I appreciated hearing from Mr. Webster again. But I agree, I think another RF engineer to concentrate on, to focus on that is helpful. I agree as well with the admission, um, information. I, I, I think we have sufficient information on that. And I don't think that that's, um, something that we have to be concerned about at this point.
Mr. Ross, did you, did you have a good opinion?
Um, no, I, I can, I can appreciate what everybody's thinking. I mean, I, yeah, that's fine. I, I'm, I'm okay. I just don't know as if it's going to be as fruitful as we're thinking it's going to be. But, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with the majority.
I agree, John.
And Ms. Beets?
Um, yeah, I, I, I feel, kind of feel the same way. Um, I'm not sure what we're going to get from it, but, um, certainly if, if the majority feels that that's necessary in terms of making a decision, uh, helping them clarify and make that decision, I'm certainly, um, always opening to learn open, um, things.
Your honor.
I, I also, Mr. Chairman, would like to hear from the public and the public to hear the information that we're going to be gaining too from this, uh, new testimony from our expert. And, uh, Mrs. Bell, no disrespect to you, but I think you're doing a great job. Uh, not to say, I didn't mean to imply that you weren't when I asked for more assistance. And if I offended you, I apologize. But, uh, we, we do need, I think we do need some assistance.
I'm not offended at all, thank you.
Mr. Zanovich?
I was just going to say, if there's a way for us to, you know, just do this, get someone on board quickly and, you know, proceed with all due speed, um, I think that we, we really need to make that one of our first efforts also. And then to schedule the next hearing, you know, as immediately as possible.
I agree. Uh, all right, Mr. Kenny, so, so I hear that it, it sounds to me like the majority would be in favor of, uh, retaining an RF engineer to review the testimony and reports.
Right.
To give an independent opinion on whether or not there's a need, uh, a, a need, a capacity need out there, I guess.
Um, yeah, so, um, um, that is, uh, did you want to, um, uh, ask, I mean, there's this whole process, but we have to do it, but we'll, we'll, we'll do that later on. Did you want to, uh, ask Mr. Delugree, um, whether we can consent to extend this?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So you're asking me, do we consent to extend this?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna try and give you a, let, let's, let's talk about some dates because I know you're, you're anxious and you've been, uh, hanging out with us for a while. What, um, about, uh, and obviously we're going to have to get, I mean, I, I don't know that we're going to finish tonight anyway, even if we didn't have someone because I think the, um, the, uh, the, there might be some public comment. And also, I know there was also, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald had some open questions about, uh, other options with the borough and things like that. So anyway, April, what, what type of date would we be looking at?
Uh, well, our June meetings are the 24th and the 29th.
All right, so knowing that we're going to have to, I, I, I would, I have, just for record, I have no idea who we would, uh, retain and, you know, we'd have to figure that all out and, and things like that. Um, but, uh, and is there anything on for the, those later meetings yet? Date, meeting dates yet, or they're still in limbo?
Uh, no, nothing's been scheduled yet.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess, uh, pick a date that you'd like it to be carried to?
I, I mean, I would, I would, I would hope we can get it done by June 24th. I'm, I'm, I don't think it needs to be a heavy lift, I mean, it's, it's not all that much data. I, I don't know, I don't know what expert retention times are in the municipal government. I don't know how hard that is to do. I can't imagine it'd be too hard.
Correct.
Thank you.
Before, before we make this final, could we just, just think about this for a second? Either, either they're going to come back and say Verizon's 100% right, it's completely safe, we're not going to decide until we said it isn't, they mulled over the data, the data's accurate, it's within the federal guidelines, that will be choice A and it's, it's the most likely outcome, right?
I disagree with that presentation. I don't, I'm not disagreeing that they're safe. I, I'm asking to define whether or not there's a capacity need there, the way they've described it.
All right, so, all right, so I apologize then because I, I was confusing this with some of the comments regarding the safety aspects of it. So this is restricted to simply whether or not there's truly a capacity issue?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, I stand corrected, I apologize.
Okay, and Mr. Fitzgerald, to your point, uh, I'm not aware of any case law which has, uh, you know, said that there's, there's adverse health effects that would be a basis. So yes, I, I think what Mr. Lisco is saying is the expert would be, you know, limited to the issue of, is there a capacity here?
All right, and then please add, please add, Mr. Kenny, to the record, uh, the point that Ms. Bell brought up regarding, uh, we have, uh, municipal ordinance that had some requirements that they were to present in front of us relative to the one mile radius.
Right.
And, and she was very specific. And I, I think, uh, for a few minutes there, we, we lost, uh, Mr. Webster during that conversation. But, but that, it was very prescriptive what the applicant is required to do. And we feel that that requirement has not been met. So I think the applicant should take this time and meet, read that ordinance and meet those requirements by the June 24th meeting as well. Because it also included, um, I, you said something like, I don't know if you said pictures or design, um, Christine, but you definitely mentioned something about presenting, you know, what's to the north or, or what's outside, what's in that one mile radius. So we became more educated as to what those other, uh, systems are.
I believe it was an inventory with details regarding height and things, but Christine was.
Right, but, but, Mr. Kenny, just to be clear, because of the concern about potentially the municipality dragging their feet, um, you know, this application today was incomplete because it didn't include that information. So I just want that to be on the record.
Yeah, and, and, and like I said, I don't know what the, the borough and Verizon issue is on, on their level. Uh, but we, uh, you know, we would get a consent to extend the timeframe. And if we didn't and we were forced to vote, we would then have to vote on whether or not the applicant met its burden tonight, which I, I, I tend to think Mr. Um, Delugree will consent, but obviously we have to hear that from him. And if he doesn't consent, we're then going to have to take it to the next level.
Fair enough, so I guess the ball's in your court, Mr. Delugree. We're looking at a June 24th meeting, I think.
All right, Rich, Rich, are you back?
Never left. Still here.
Okay.
Um, I've contacted my client, I'm authorized to give one final consent to June 24th meeting. Uh, however, I just want this on the record and I, I trust the board would do this anyway. Um, the scope of the inquiry and the report of your expert, we're going to protest it and specifically protest paying it. If it deals at all with health and safety, those issues are in fact, by law, taken away from the board. If we meet, unless you find an expert who, who concludes that we're not going to meet the FCC standards for emissions, which isn't going to happen. Uh, the case law, the case of, uh, SMART, the S M R, is very clear that if you meet the emission regulations, health and safety cannot be a factor in the board's decision. So that's one thing, you know. I, I think, you know, certainly from Mr. Fitzgerald's comments, that, that he would instruct your expert in, in that, if your expert wasn't already aware of that and, you know, concluded at the beginning that that's not a proper subject for his or her inquiry. But, uh, the other thing is, we've been tied, not at our request and not certainly to the advantage of this application, to the DAS system, the proposed DAS system. We will not, we will object to and we're not going to pay for an expert who is looking into any aspects of the DAS system. That stands alone, that is its own issue. And wherever it goes, it goes. And it's, it's covered by different law and different timelines for decision making and everything else. Um, this application can't be tied to that. And specifically in terms of what your expert is going to look at and evaluate, the DAS system's irrelevant. The issue, I think was stated, and I apologize if I'm not recalling which board member just said this, but it's a capacity issue question. That's what the expert should be looking at and evaluating whether or not the testimony you've heard is, is accurate, is compelling, however you want to describe it, in terms of whether there is a capacity need for, uh, justifying the Mama Luke site. Uh, the final point, and this is purely, I don't want to say speculative, but I don't know that this will come into play. But, uh, certainly your expert has access to the records of all the public and to whatever has been submitted by the applicant to the board. Uh, there, if they want to go beyond that, uh, it's very likely to be getting into area of proprietary information, which we don't share with competitors or with anyone else. Um, I'm not saying it gets there, but, you know, you should be aware of that. That might be an issue that comes up, depending on what your expert seems to be and the scope of inquiry that they want to undertake. So with that, uh, as noted, we, uh, we would give a one-month consent.
Mr. Delugree, I, I, if those were the conditions of your consent, um, your claim that the, the DAS system is unrelated to the capacity issue that currently exists, I, I don't think that you could reach that conclusion. So if, if you're saying that's a condition of your extension, I think the board needs, I think the board would need to discuss that because, um, you're setting a condition that it could have relevance, you're making a statement that does not. And what if we're, we would like to know whether or not that's accurate? We don't feel you've proven the fact that they are, that it, that, that the DAS system does not help ameliorate the, 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 the current issue.
Like, that, that's not what I'm saying, Mr. Fitzgerald. And I think it was made clear in Mr. Webster's testimony. Yes, the DAS system, if it existed, which it doesn't, would ameliorate some portion of the capacity issue. I thought the core question that you want your expert to look into was, is there in fact a, a capacity issue at all? Until you answer that question, I don't know that you get into which.
I have, I have a question for you, uh, uh, Rick, if you might, don't mind me calling you Rick. Will the DAS system stand alone by itself?
The DAS system, let's take Mama Lukes out of the picture altogether.
No, without Mama Lukes, will the DAS system stand alone by itself?
Mr., yeah, yes, but, Mr. Webster's testimony is, it, no, no, the but, it's a legitimate but. The, uh, the DAS system is intended to provide certain areas of service and capacity offload. And it's, you know, physically it's going to be located where it is and the nature of the equipment is different than the Mama Luke's equipment and various other things. So to that extent, it provides or would, if it ever got approved, would provide service. The testimony from Mr. Webster was, the Mama Luke's site proposes different equipment, different level of service and a different, to a large extent, a different area of service, which is complementary to, works in conjunction with and supports what you would get from the DAS system. But now turn it around the other way, right now there is no DAS system. We don't know if there ever will be a DAS system. We know that Mama Lukes, because, and this information was provided in the initial report before the board asked us to do an analysis of what it would look like with Mama Lukes and the DAS system. So in that initial report from, uh, VCOM, you see from the mapping what it is that Mama Lukes will provide. When the DAS system comes online, that changes in terms of which is the best server. You know, will given DAS node, um, give better service within a certain geographic area? And will Mama Lukes then be the prominent or the predominant server within a different geographic area? And all that's shown on the mapping. But the two of them have always been intended to work together. Um, and both of them are intended to address capacity need. And unless I misunderstood completely, it sounded like the issue that the board wanted an expert to look into was whether, in fact, under whatever turned out to be the applicable standards, there is or is not a, an actionable, uh, shortfall in service that needs to be addressed at all.
So you're telling me the DAS system can stand alone if Mama Lukes is not there?
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
You're telling me then that DAS system can stand alone if Mama Lukes is not there?
The DAS system will provide a level of service, which is not the same as you would have if you had both Mama Lukes and the DAS, uh, system. And it's different from what you would have if you had the Mama Lukes site and no DAS system. In all those scenarios, Mama Lukes provides service either in place of a DAS system, if you don't have one, or in addition to, it provides service that the DAS system isn't going to provide.
I don't know, I don't know if you answered my question. Uh, will it stand alone? Yes or no?
Maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're.
Yeah.
Both, both systems, both systems are needed. How about that?
If Mama Lukes doesn't exist, can the DAS system function on its own?
All right, I don't want to misunderstand what you're saying. The DAS system, if it was approved and installed, is a system which will provide a certain level of service. It will not provide the identical service to what you get from Mama Lukes. Mama Lukes was always designed with the DAS system in mind and vice versa, that they're both intended to work together to collectively address the overall identified service need. If you took away either piece of that, you're not going to have, you're not going to address it in the same way.
So, yeah, real quick though, so you said something interesting there. Because the first meeting, I was the one that brought up the whole DAS system to begin with about, you know, previously, and everybody was surprised by it and you had to get more information on it. So I'm curious why you're now saying that it was always designed with the DAS system in mind? Because I, I had raised the question and nobody knew what I was talking about. And you had to come back and provide us with that letter saying, oh yeah, we figured it out and it's a totally different thing. So I'm, I'm kind of confused by that statement.
Well, maybe the answer is just in the sequencing of things. We identify a service need and then you start looking at how you're going to address it. And yet, as Mr. Webster said, there's a couple of different ways you can address it. One, which was never really in play here, was to use existing sites, uh, which are all identified on, on the maps in the RF reports. A second way is by using, um, installations such as the one we're proposing at Mama Lukes. And we got to Mama Lukes through a process of eliminating other places, which in theory could have provided the same thing. Uh, and then you come down to a point where in, Mama Lukes was the choice. Along the way, because these things, you know, there's a, a lead time to plan these things, the DAS technology develops and the proposal for a DAS system comes together. So you know that the DAS system is going to provide something over and above what the Mama Luke site's going to provide. And you obviously designed the two of them so that you're not providing, you know, inconsistent or incomplete coverage between the two of them. Just as you do with all the other sites. When you design the Mama Luke site, you're cognizant of what service are you getting from all the other sites in town that feed into that, that same general area? So it's a network, you know, everything is designed to provide the maximum level of service you can from the minimum number of sites.
Uh, no, one more question if I may.
Hey, Bob, Bob, can you hear me? It's starting to get late and, and we've still got a little business to go, to go on. We're trying to decide when the next meeting is and if, if the applicant will extend our ability to act on that decision. Could I respectfully ask that we just hold our questions till the next meeting, assuming the applicant's going to, uh, grant the extension?
That's okay, but I might forget my question.
Hey, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, just, just real, so quickly to bring this, uh, bring this home. So, uh, we're going to ask for a motion to carry this to June 24th, 2021. With the understanding that, uh, we are going to, uh, attempt to retain a radio frequency, uh, expert, uh, to assist in our evaluation. And I think, uh, Mr. Delugree made some, uh, uh, points that, uh, I don't necessarily agree with, but I don't necessarily disagree with. But I think the important thing is, the reason that we're retaining an expert is because this is a little bit technological, it's a little bit above our heads and we need an expert. So to Mr. Fitzgerald's point, I don't think we can hamstring or limit what our expert is going to, to review. Now, I would imagine that in the absence of extraordinary circumstances, uh, there is not going to be research on the, on the health and safety issues. Uh, but I don't know if there's going to be, you know, if the, uh, our expert is going to. But I don't know if there's going to be, you know, if the, our expert is going to come to the same conclusion regarding the impact of the DAS system or the NAC system. I don't know. I mean, I can't say that. So I don't think we can restrict our expert's review. But Mr. Delucary's objections are noted for the record, and importantly, and this is a really important part, the way the municipal land use law operates is that the charges that the Burrow pays to its professionals on behalf of this application and every application, they are copied and sent to Mr. Delucary so his clients can review and challenge. So if they get billed for something for which they feel, feel that there should not, they should not have been billed, or they were perhaps overcharged, there is by law an appeal process. So I think it's a fair thing that we note Mr. Delucary's objections, but we, we can't be restricted, and, but we understand where he's coming from, and I'm sure he understands where we're coming from. And then the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, is, I hate the risk, I mean, I hate the throwing this last piece of the puzzle in. If we're adjourning this meeting to a new date, we have to give a date, and I think we have to determine, because we're just going to have to tell the people, is this going to be, our June meeting is going to be a live meeting or a remote meeting, because that will impact on, on, on what we say in our motion. So I know I just threw another wrinkle into the, the mix there.
I know we're going to talk about live meetings and, and remote meetings. Could I just offer that we agree to do the next meeting remote for the sake of getting this application on the schedule for the June 24th meeting? And then maybe we discuss meeting in person by email? And then we could change our June 29th meeting to in person, should the board so desire?
Sure. So what we.
Could I just ask April if that's okay with her for tonight?
No, that's fine with me.
Thank you.
And, and so what we'll do then, Rich, we were going to carry this to June 24th, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM for a remote meeting. For those members of the public who are here and were patient enough, A, we thank you, and B, we want you to come back. C, you're not going to get another notice, this is your notice to, to come back. And Mr. Delucary, in conjunction with all the qualifications that you and I have just put on the record, do you consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Motion, uh, Mr. Chair, I guess we'll just, for record keeping purposes, have a motion to that effect.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Do you want to address the public, because I know there's some that are raising their hands, hoping to talk?
Uh, I would say at this hour, we would ask them to come back to the next meeting. We adjourned this application, and then ask them to come back to the next meeting. Does anybody disagree with that?
I don't.
And April, is there anything else on the, the June 24th meeting at this point?
Um, well, I did have one application, but I think he was hoping that we were going to be back to live meetings, so I'm not sure if he'll want to wait for that or proceed anyway. Um, and then I'm going to go through the list and start scheduling once we make a decision on if we're doing Zoomer, live.
Okay, because maybe, in, in fairness, we can try to have the Verizon application heard as quickly to the front of the meeting as possible. Okay. Just for the interest of the members of the public who have been here listening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so the application's adjourned, and I think that's it, Mr. Delucary.
Thank you, and I hope the board has a wonderful Memorial Day and fine cell service.
The board won't, we can have a, Ocean Avenue.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli, and a second for Mr. Gray.
All in favor?
All right, everybody have a nice holiday.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.